Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes, good evening, everybody. And if you'll take note, there's the exit, emergency exit there and one in the back. And thank you for coming here on short notice because of the work that needs to be done still at Town Hall. And if you'll all join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Just want to, before I forget, wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. And welcome to the Town Engineering Planning Board. So, okay, Mike? Is Michael the last one here?
So, Mike actually just announced the project.
Okay, all right. So for SEMCO Development, is anybody here representing?
Okay, so I got an email. And they've asked to be adjourned to the December 15 meeting. Because they have not received the Dutchess County Department of Public Works and the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation on a few of the questions that we had asked the last meeting. That affects some of the things that were proposed, so.
So is anybody here for that public hearing? Good, so do I have to apologize? All right.
You should. We're going to adjourn it to December 15, 2022.
Well, I was here for it. You were? I apologize. I'm sorry. All right, so can I have a motion vote in the public meeting?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the public meeting.
Actually, to open it, we have to open.
What, you're thinking of SEMCO or what?
Yeah, we're going to open and close it because of a technical.
You're going to adjourn it.
Adjourn it.
You're just adjourn it or we open it?
We're going to keep it open. Oh, we're just adjourning it.
It's already open from the last.
Okay.
From the temporary.
So I'm just going to make a motion to adjourn it to the next meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So that was quick. Take that one off. All right. Second item on the agenda is Sparrow's Nest. Thank you. We don't have mics or podiums, so you'll need to.
Steve Lally?
Please, and you can set that up so that it faces.
If you want.
Right. If anybody's presenting or speaking, just stand where we normally would at Town Hall. Open up this area. So you want to move that this way? Is that people running outside? Now, anybody speaking at the public hearing at the same block, just come up to the board.
Can't that so the public can see it?
Yeah.
You want me to go up there or leave this here? Good right here?
You can begin.
All right. So, Steve Lally, I'm in architecture, representing, I'm the architect of the project, representing the owner, Krista Sparrow's Nest. Before I get started, I've just, I've got to bring up one point. The last time that we tried to present and have the public hearing, we went by the documents that were online. So I got to say in a word, I know this is being recorded, those documents suck. They really do. They are very misleading. I don't want to have any, like, future applications to have to go through what we went through. It says on there in black and white, it even says that you have to notify, like, when you put out the mailings. That they have to go to the adjoining property owners. And nowhere on there does it say, like, what the radius needs to be.
Oh, okay.
So, and even the block that's on there, it says subdivision.
So that's my second apology for that.
I think it's 500.
So all right, I'll make some notes and then.
It is 500 feet, but we had no idea.
Oh, okay.
So it doesn't even reference, like, the code section.
But it is written in code, just.
It's written in the code, but it doesn't steer you that way anywhere.
Okay.
Sounds like we just need to have it reference the code.
We started working on a new application package anyway. It's old, outdated.
Yeah. Thanks for bringing that up.
Yep. So with that said, with the timeframe that we had, we addressed as many of the comments that were on Dan Kohler's memo. We now have a lighting plan, we have a landscaping plan. Drawings have been sent to the highway superintendent. We've addressed things about the signage with the level of disturbance. We are now clearly under an acre. And we've made a bunch of, we just addressed as many of the comments as we possibly could.
All right. So, for the public, if you could give a description of what this is about?
Sure. So we say this is going to be the new home for the Sparrow's Nest. 7,000 square foot building. Three, oh, I'm sorry, 2,000 square feet is going to be for the offices, administration. The other 5,000 square feet is going to be for kitchen and storage. We're trying to disturb as little on this site as we possibly can. We have just a handful of parking spaces. It's not a public building, it's really just to be for their facility, so that they can make as much food as they possibly can to serve a greater area.
And where is it located?
It's located right across the street from the Beacon Library.
And the architecture, and maybe I'm wrong, to me it reminds me a lot of Zogies, in a way.
If anybody wants to see it, this is a rendering of what the building is going to look like.
Right.
And Sparrow's Nest, what is the service that it provides?
Krista, I'll turn it over to you, because I don't want to butcher it.
Sure. It's worth noting, so.
So I am the founder and executive director of Sparrow's Nest. We've been existence for about 10 years. Our mission is to feed families that are facing any type of cancer diagnosis, where there are children that are 18 or under that are living in the home. At this point, we have so many senior citizens that are left out of getting these meals because our mission is directed more towards those that have children living in the home, that there's a real need to address that population and the food insecurities that they face as well. Our facility really is one in which we don't see a lot of public traffic. The food is made in-house, and then our refrigerated truck takes that food to other counties where they meet volunteers that drive it to recipients. And then we have eight drivers that come on Tuesday mornings to pick up the food that is for Dutchess County residents. So our goal is to keep it the way that we've been running it for the last 10 years, in which everything is made in-house, and then we are bringing it out to disperse to the public.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation in a general, thank you. So with that.
Do we need a motion to open the public meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the building department and planning department has taken a look at the proof of the certified mailings and the legal advertisement, and it was done properly.
And do you have any other comments regarding your deficiency of that again?
No, I think we opened it, and I can also talk about some things.
I'll make a motion to open this up to the public.
Okay. Second demotion.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, unanimous. Some rules of the road for public hearings. So there's a three-minute time limit, all right? So try to combine your comments to three minutes, and you'll address the board. If we don't respond, it's because we're hearing what you're saying, taking notes, and we want to give everybody a chance to speak. And after we close the hearing, then what we'll do is we'll address your comments. But there isn't any cross-talk unless a board member has a question for you while you're talking. And that allows everybody to have a fair say in the audience. So with that, is anybody interested in standing and commenting and being heard at Sparrow's Nest? Please, Mr. Crane.
It's, I'm Bill Crane, 254 Gardner Hollow Road. This is obviously a wonderful project, which I support. I have a couple of questions. The applicant said that he's trying to disperse the environment as little as possible, any trees going down or anything like that. And I don't, I can't see from the drawing what the surface is. Is it, it looks like it's some sort of asphalt surface. Is it possible to have a permeable surface, some kind of crushed stone or earthen surface that would help prevent pollution runoff, non-point source pollution runoff? Because there will be trucks and things coming in there, and pollution can get in there and start running into the water supplies. And it's always better to have some sort of stone or crushed surface, and it also would be more in line with the rural character of our town to have some kind of earthen surface, if it is, if it is, if it's not a permeable surface, if it is a hard, if it is a hard surface right now, an artificial surface. So those are my thoughts.
I can answer your questions. So like with the trees, so we have to remove a couple of trees to put this building in. However, when we're all done, there's going to be more trees on this site than there are right now. As far as like the pervious, impervious for the paving, we're looking into it. Yeah, because there's not, there won't be, like, deliveries, and correct me if I'm wrong, there won't be deliveries, like, every single day. Like, there won't be an 18-wheeler coming up, you know, five days a week on this site. It's only once a week. So it's just going to be regular vehicle traffic for Krista and her staff. So it won't be a very, very active site.
Do I get a chance to just ask a little more?
Sure.
Just to recommend to the chair.
Oh, okay, he was answering. That's good, if you could get it impermeable, since it's not going to be that much. Get it, or permeable, I mean, permeable surface, that would be nice. I'll talk later another time about this, two trees, and some of the other projects have a whole lot of trees, and I'd like to say a couple words about replacing trees a bit, and how, why a tree can't be really replaced. But I'll save that for next.
There is another public hearing right after this one, so you can talk.
Depends on what it's on. Okay, well, thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak about Sparrow's Nest?
I think a motion to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Fay Grito, second, a motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the public meeting for Sparrow's Nest is now closed.
I have a quick question for the town engineers. Is there any requirement that they have to do asphalt, or this is second?
I can take a look at the code to see. I believe it has to be, you know, in particular in the ADA accessible areas, it really needs to be a hard, stable, smooth surface. So, for example, I'll give an example of an agenda item that's on tonight for Barton's Farm Market. They have in the ADA accessible areas an actual asphalt section there. And then they're using millings on some of the other parking around, so it gives a little bit more permeable nature, you know, it's a little more maintenance sometimes with the plowing and everything, and you're pushing some of those stones, you've got to fix that, can actually create some erosion issues because of that as well. But if it's done right, it can be, it can be a good thing, so. I can look at the code though to check for sure.
One of the people in the town mentioned to me a concern about the lighting. And actually, it's Brent Davis who lives across the road from the library and would be in Sparrow's Nest, and he's, he stated that the lighting from the library, shall we say, invades his, invades his privacy. So I don't know, I don't know very much about lighting, but if somehow that, that issue could be addressed.
Sure. Actually, what I'd like to hear is, this is Matt Towner, Willingham Engineering. He's.
I'm over here, I guess.
Please.
So I prepared the photometric plan, lighting plan for this. Describe it.
Sheet SP3.
There we go.
Sheet SP3 shows the lighting.
Yeah, there are, as you, this is the photometric plan, so there's zero-foot candles well within the property boundary line, so that just measures how much light is at that location. So there's really minimal lighting here, it's just for parking and deliveries. They're going to be, Dan made a comment, they're going to be dark sky compliant, LED fixtures. And we're going to set time limits on them for when people arrive and when they leave. So they're not going to be on at all hours of the night, so I don't really think they're going to affect the neighbors.
And the cash would probably be downwards?
It has to be downwards, yeah.
Thank you.
Is the board satisfied with this one?
Yeah, I'll just bring up a few of the bigger items. I mean, there is a nice landscaping plan proposed. I think there's a few things that will need to be checked on that, particularly when they had the updated survey performed. That was part of the reason why I was asking for it, because then you get to see some of those other items on there, and there's overhead wires that are going right over some of the proposed trees and stuff like that, so. That mixed in with the potential of a sidewalk and utility easement along Town Center Boulevard and Cove Valley, it might make sense to actually just pull all that landscaping in a bit. Looks like there's plenty of room for it, it's just a matter of pulling it in and leaving those outside areas for that, and to not be in conflict with the overhead wires in the future. The planning board should discuss the landscaping proposal. It seems to be a nice plan, if you ask me, but there's a couple of experts here on the board that can opine a little bit better than I can. Some of the other things, just the lighting, Madderick just spoke about it. Just wanted to make sure that, they mentioned that's dark sky, dark sky compliant, Nethonia, the lighting that was shown there is always, as far as I've seen, all these new LEDs are all dark sky compliant, but just to put some notation on there about that. And I concur with what Matt said, there's zero-foot candles around that entire perimeter, you know, so the photometric plan that was shown goes to the zero. And so there's, there's some, you know, 20, 30, maybe even 40 feet or so to the nearest property line where there's any foot candles of light at that point, so. The planning board should discuss that, make sure that they're okay with that, give them some guidance on that. Just mentioned the utility easement a little bit. The ag data statement, there's a couple of questions there, if you could just revise those. If you want to send that to me sooner than later, then we can send that to the county and to that neighboring property.
Okay.
So that would be good to get out of the way.
Can I get it out this week?
We already sent the 239 referral to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development, now that, now that the proposal shows the lighting and landscaping. Even though there might be some of those changes, I was just mentioning about pulling some trees in or whatnot, it's, the general plan was sufficient enough to be able to start that process with the county, so that was done today. We've asked, we've asked them for comment by the next meeting.
Okay.
So that would be the December 15 meeting. Soonly you might be able to submit by then to be able to keep the process moving, but if not, we'll still have the comments from them, and I'll forward them to you as soon as we get.
Okay.
Rob, do you have any comments about the project?
No, I think it's a good planning plan. They're all up on trees and, on this walk trees suitable for that site. I mean, the only comment I would say, and I didn't, maybe it's in here somewhere, I just couldn't see it, is I, you might want to put planting detail in there, tree planting detail. So, because it is an open site, you might want to staple trees, as good as wind, you know, probably a blimp hitting them pretty hard, drying them up. They want to staple, good planting details show that. And, but otherwise, it's a good plan, this is a good plan for the plan, and, you know, I appreciate the attention to the landscape, and I think it's going to really look like an attractive site, and so.
So you can't really tell public, but you can see these are the trees that they're adding here, there's a total of 54 trees around the perimeter there on the corner, and it's a mixture of northern red oak, red maple, Norway spruce, autumn brilliance, I'm not familiar with that one.
It is. Serviceberry.
Oh, yeah, serviceberry?
Yeah, it's a multi-stem tree.
Okay. And then there's pink dogwood and eastern red pine. Yeah, so. Is there more, Dan?
That's generally it, I mean, just in terms of process, it's a coordinated review of an unlisted action, so they've recognized that there's a few variances that they would be going to the zoning board for, will need to make a secret determination before that process from the zoning board can start. So the board can authorize me to take a look at a possible NECDAC for the December 15 meeting. I can have that prepared, if you want to authorize me to do that, I'll do that, and then that would be a way for them to get to that point where they go to the zoning board and make sure that those variances don't suck in that.
I'd like to propose that we authorize the town engineer to prepare a NECDAC preparation.
I'll second, may, Fay.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then I guess one procedural snafu with the closing of the public hearing, we're supposed to make a decision preliminary within 62 days. The way this is going to work is that if we do the NECDAC in December, that allows them to maybe go to the January zoning board. Not sure if they get back to the planning board within the 62 days, so what we would normally ask is if the applicant would formally waive the 62-day period, with the understanding that there's a little process that has to happen before. We don't want to grant a preliminary approval without having a zoning board decision.
Decision, right.
So we're asking the applicant to waive the 62?
Correct. We're asking the applicant to waive the 62.
And the applicant is aware, because he doesn't look like he's aware?
No, I think we're aware.
Oh, you are?
Whatever's going to move this along the fastest.
Okay.
Waiving it means we can move on to ZBA and keep going, and, yeah, we'll wave away.
Okay, he's waving away. So.
I think we need you to actually wave.
I'll say goodbye to it right now.
Does that work? You have a, you have a look?
Uh, well, no, once he gets back from ZBA, he'll be able to incorporate his variances into, so. You know, you'll have a more full picture. Best conditions.
So, may, that's it for you? All right, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
And Dan, just on a quick side note, Dan, I did get your email tonight.
Yeah.
So I'll, I'll send you an email with responses.
Yeah, FAB met, the Fire Advisory Board met this morning, so.
Okay.
They just threw that in there, I figured I'd send it on to you right away.
Okay. Yeah, but I got, I got answers for all those.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sure, thank you.
All right, great, thank you.
All right, so next on the agenda is our third public hearing, it's 169 and 173 Line Ridge Road, Lot Line Adjustment.
Good thing. I was here last month when we started the process, we're hopefully going to finish it up tonight, so. What we're proposing is my neighbor and I changing four ages.
I'm sorry? I'm sorry, we, I have to officially open up the panel.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing concerning the Line Ridge Road.
All in favor?
For the record, the building department, planning department took a look at their mailings and their legal ad, and they were in order.
The property that we're talking about is on Line Ridge Road, which is right down here by Hollington, Helltown, Hollenstra School, Beacon Hollenstra School. My neighbor and I are expanding, I want to expand my property from an acre and a half to five and a half acres. My neighbor's going to subtract your property from 20 acres down to 16 acres. Primary purpose is I want to protect myself in case the property sells, so that I don't have anybody building beside me. That's the primary purpose behind the whole process, okay? I'm not quite a legal frontage on the road, I'm going from 25 feet to 55 feet of frontage, but since I was existing prior to the code change, I can keep my property boundary at the 80-some feet. Other than that, I don't have anything else to add to the process of what we're doing. I'm sorry, there's no development plan, obviously, it's going to stay vacant land. I'm going to mow a little bit in front of my house to make it look like part of my front yard, and I might both mow the boundary around it so we can tell where the property line is, but other than that, there's nothing going on to the property at this point in time, so I might make my garden bigger or something. Other than that, that's it.
So the applicant has formally requested a few waivers. The first set of waivers is all related to the sketch subdivision approval. It's 130-12E, it's in Edward, which is showing topography. Second one is 130-12F, as in Frank, dealing, showing soil boundaries on the mapping. The third is 130-12H, as in Henry, and that's showing trees greater than the 12-inch diameter. They did show a number of trees, they just didn't say what size they were on there. The fourth is 130-18F, as in Frank, subsection 12, which is also showing topography. but more, more detailed than the earlier topography you mentioned. And the reason for the waiver request is that there's no proposed disturbance at all. This is all just changing lot lines. There's no, no changes in driveways, septics, house locations. No construction at all. And so they seem reasonable. So if the board wants to consider those, you can do so. And then you would be in a position to grant the sketch subdivision approval.
Board have any comments regarding waivers?
I think there's no issue.
I don't have any issues, but I'd like to add a public statement before.
Yeah, I think it would be appropriate to have the sketch subdivision portion done first. And then the public, because technically the sketch portion is done before the public hearing in our mode.
So you're looking for a resolution to grant approval of the sketch plan?
Yeah, I think we probably should have had the sketch portion done before you open the public hearing.
All right.
But so just procedurally, I think it would be sensible to just get it out of the way right now.
I'm ready to do that. I'll make a motion to grant approval of the sketch plan.
With those waivers? And those waivers?
With the waivers specified.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, if you want to open up to the public then.
Is there anybody that would like to speak about this project in the public? Ready? Motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There were also two waivers that were requested that have to do with preliminary and final approval. So 130-20A, as in Alfred II, which is another one on the topography again. And then 130-20A, as in Alfred VI, which is trees greater than the eight inch diameter. And again, reasoning is there's no construction for those here. So some information that still wouldn't help the process here.
Yeah, we have one real nice tree over there. That's a very nice tree too. But that's the only tree on the property that's being.
I'm sure when you move the line, it doesn't hurt the tree.
There's a lot of them along the lot line, but that one's by itself. And it's really nice.
Open a motion.
I'll make a motion to grant the two waivers referred to by the town engineer.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I circulated a resolution for your consideration. It includes preliminary and a conditional final subdivision. The conditions are listed in the back of the resolution. Mostly standard stuff. Did the resolution print it? I didn't see it. I might have to do the right, if you mailed it. No, I actually have the resolution.
So I'm not signed in the draft tonight. I mean, the, or anything.
Well, it's a draft anyway, so.
Okay, so you want us to?
So you can consider preliminary approval, preliminary subdivision approval. And then you can consider final conditional and all region conditions that we have on here. If you like, just since you don't have it in front of you. Okay, so the conditions.
Are we doing them separately or we're doing it as one resolution?
I do want to. Yeah, it's, it's really simple. I had it all listed in the one in the draft.
Okay, okay. It's go by your draft.
So preliminary and conditional. So the conditions would be that the applicant provide to the town engineer the project's plan revised with satisfaction of the town engineer to address his letter of November 15, 2022. And then any additional comments that may arise as a result of the satisfaction of said letter. Project is located within 500 feet in established agricultural district. The applicant shall submit an agricultural data statement to the town. The town will manulage the ag data statement to the identified agricultural district parcel it's joining. The applicant should provide deeds and legal descriptions of parcels along with TP54 forms for review and approval by the town attorney.
That's definitely we get this all done, right? Because I mean, it has to be filed with the county before we can have the deeds, right?
No, you can create, you can create the deeds before.
My attorneys told me that I have to wait for it to be filed with the county, and then he'll prepare the deeds and form, and then, and then we can bring them to review. That's, that's what he says I'm supposed to do.
You normally, you normally review first, sir. You tell first.
I'll try to have your attorney call me in.
Okay, all right.
Number four is to mediate any existing code violations as stipulated by the building inspector.
I have a question on that. Are there any? Or do we have to go ask the building department?
Except they ask her.
Okay.
Yeah. After the date the plan was last revised, the owner's certification on all plan sheets shall be signed by the applicants and all owners affected by the application. And all licensed professionals shall seal and sign the plans as appropriate. One complete set of paper plans and one complete set of plans on Mylar, both signed by all parties, shall be submitted to the planning board office after all revisions have been made for acceptance. Number six, any and all outstanding application escrow fees related to the planning board in due process shall be remitted as directed by the town comptroller's office. Number seven, the applicant shall sign a copy of this resolution and file it with the planning board for the purpose of indicating familiarity with provisions of this resolution, acknowledging receipt and a copy thereof. And then a general condition is that the conditional subdivision plan approval expired 180 days from the date of the resolution, which would be May 16, 2023, unless extended by action of the town of Beeman Planning Board. So for the applicant to understand, this is a conditional approval. Once the conditions are finalized and the plan is actually signed in, you have a final.
We're basically waiting for Bob to come back into town on the 23rd. As soon as he finishes that, I've got the application for the agricultural thing prepared already. I just need to put a map with it. I don't know if one of the preliminary amounts of work or whether it has to be a final formal map.
Just use a tax map or something.
Okay, all right.
That's typical for Ag DUC, they have a show tax, tax map.
Okay.
That's it.
All right, great. Thank you.
I have a question for the applicant. So are you okay with these conditions?
Yes.
Okay, and so you'll actively pursue it, so we'll do a lot of extension? We do a lot of extensions.
Yeah, we have a, we have a sale pending on its 15 acres. So we're trying to get my, this completed so that people can move in, my new neighbors can be moving in. So we're, we're actively doing this. We're just trying to get, like I said, we, my surveyor's on vacation until the 23rd. So when he comes back into town, he'll take care of all, 90% of what's outstanding.
I, I take no exception to these conditions or stand, there's the standard conditions we pretty much do for our project.
We're going to tonight talk about a change in extensions.
I would like to offer a motion to grant preliminary approval and final conditional approvals based on the resolution prepared by the town engineer.
Sounds good, Fay. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Have a good night. So next on the agenda is discussion with Green Haven Road Solar Community.
Yeah, if you've had a chance to read my letter, the applicant has made very good progress in the last few months. In fact, they were in a position to go to the zoning board of appeals where they were able to obtain the area variance that they were seeking. So that was the big obstacle in terms of that, once we had the seeker done a few months ago. That was what allowed them to go there. They were granted that area variance and, and now it's mainly housekeeping items left. So the review letter has gotten a lot shorter. So we were seeking that the planning board authorize us to draft a resolution of preliminary site plan approval, the water resource permit, conditional final site plan approval, and special use permit approval for consideration at the December meeting. We feel that the plans are, and the supporting documents are in sufficient order for them. No. Not yet.
Any comments from the board?
So there's not going to be more public hearing?
We closed those, yeah. That's closed. They, they received their, their approvals for the area variance of the zoning board appeals. And at this point, are we interested in, in preliminary site plan approval? Or is resource permitting and then conditional final? That's where we're at.
Yeah, if you're, if you feel that you're ready for that, you'll authorize me to prepare a resolution for your consideration. If you're, if you're still at the point where you're preliminary, if you want any of the other items from the letter completed or, you know, to limit the amount of conditions, so be that.
Again, they've mentioned everything that you brought up or discussed. Such as, it's, it's a question. They, such as the tree size, the diaphragm, and the non-disturbance of the vegetation on the property line at
Carriage line, that will reach property.
Sorry, John? Brain dead for a moment. So all, all those factors that they've, they've addressed and taken into consideration, right? As well, as well as the issues that were raised by the fire department?
Yeah, in fact, the fire department, the fire advisory board met this morning and they had discussed this as well. They were, and I don't know if this was asked of the applicant before, but the area on both sides of the fence, so there's 25 feet from the fence to the panel on the inside. And I think there was 20 feet on the outside, right?
Yeah.
They were, they were asking that if they could brush hog that once a month so that vehicles could get through as needed. And also act as a fire break. I don't know if we had, if they had asked you that before. I don't know. Once a month seems kind of excessive, but if that's what they want, that's what they want.
Yeah, you could start in December.
Yeah. Well, I think it was, it was also limited to like the main season, you know? I think it was, I think they said made in, made in September or something. But I, I can check the notes on FAB.
Also, isn't the disturbed soils supposed to be planted with wildflowers or something?
Yes, the, the wildflower mix is in between all the panels in there.
Between the panels?
Yeah.
All right.
So that could grow and function as, you know, pollinators for bees and butterflies and all that.
Then I think once a month might be a little excessive. But I think that something like that should be entered into as, as a condition.
Typically, we like to mow our sites approximately once a year. They, they let it grow up to the bottom of the panel, which is about three and a half feet. And they go in and cut it down again. It doesn't grow that fast, so like, you know.
Well, the concern is not between, their concern is not between the panels as much as it is, correct me, that they want the brush or vegetation mowed between the panel and the fence. And between the fence and.
Their only purpose is to put out fires on other property that might.
Right.
Yeah, so they're, they're going to let the panels basically do what they do if that happens, so. And I, I thought they just wanted to go twice within the growing season.
Well, just a, a quick observation. This year, your growing season is really a lot different than normal years. If you said, and once it gets to a certain height, then it must be mowed. And that way it's not every month, but it's a reasonable restriction. What with the heights, I don't know. This year, you'd probably do it once. Maybe next year, it might be two or three times. I don't know.
Yeah, not a drop of rain in July or August.
So, all right.
So what if you said that, let's say that between the months of April through April, through October, to November 1st, that the height of the vegetation be maintained at X number of, X number of inches?
Within that 25 and then the 20. Because we want the pollinators to grow on the inside.
So what would be a reasonable height?
Well, you don't want it too short or else you're scalping the grass.
Right.
So let's say minimum three or four inches.
I was going to say.
So for a minimum, you're saying? And what about, what about the maximum that tells?
Yeah, oh.
That's, that's more of the issue, I think.
But what becomes a burn?
What if, what if you said eight inches, the height of the sheet of paper?
That's the maximum height, where it gets to that height and mow it?
I don't, I don't think, Rob, I don't think you want to scalp it. And there's always a tendency to, I think, to scalp things. So what if we said that the vegetation should be maintained at a height of really no less than and no greater than, say, six to eight inches?
I would personally approve of that, as long as the fire department doesn't think that's still a potential for a fire hazard.
They're just, yeah.
I, I agree, higher than that, but the higher is worse for their purpose. Was them trying to prevent fire costs.
I brought that up because I, I was wondering whether or not, you know, the, the actual surface should be gravel or, or milling or whatever. And they, they were more concerned about being able to get to another property in case there was a fire. So it's mostly about vehicles. And I believe you're.
Oh, it's about access.
It's access and vehicles only. And you're not going to be going in with big trucks, right? It's mostly.
It'd be, uh, pickup trucks.
Pickup trucks.
Yeah, it's both. Fire so they can see what's on the ground in front of them as they're going in with this equipment. But also so that it acts as a fire break as well.
Fire break, yeah. So what constitutes fire break? Anything over six inch, anything over eight, eight inch?
They didn't give you a maximum.
Yeah, I, I brought that up and that wasn't my concern.
Access. It's more access.
So we did, we did agree to maintain, make sure it's a drivable path around the outside. So it's not like they're going to fall into, you know, a deep pit or something. I mean, I think for, for us, like a reasonable height would be 12 to 18 inches max because.
I mean, I think for, for us, like, a reasonable height would be 12 to 18 inches max, because grass grows pretty quick, I mean, like, it's gonna be hard to, you know, monitor that, but also a pickup truck can drive through 12 to 18, 18 inches of grass growth, any problem, especially since it will be maintained.
Yeah, if a limb falls in there, and it's disguised, you know, like it's hidden by the grass.
Yeah.
Like a limb could fall on 12 inches and not, and you wouldn't see him, right?
The thing that concerns me is...
I thought you were saying...
The park was harder than that.
It may not be a potential for a limb, because you're cutting some trees out.
All right, well, Dan, you said once a month?
I mean, that's, well, that's what they suggested.
That's what they suggested, so why don't I just leave it at that?
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
I would say maintain at a six inch height.
Is it gonna be enforced? I mean, it's basically...
It's a condition, it would be a condition of the special use permit.
Right.
Once a month will be, will ensure it's being maintained at six inches.
Okay.
I mean, if you're agreeing to once a month, then that sounds, that's...
Yeah, between...
They're not, so the fire department's asking us...
I mean, you could put, you could put, uh, once a month and/or six inches, so that if it's like a drought, you know, it's not...
Yeah, okay, okay. Yeah, it's not gonna grow much in a month, it's like...
Right. Dan, do you have any concerns about any of the comments that haven't been met, like the rain garden or...
No, they're, they're getting, they've advanced the plan significantly since...
Now, legally speaking, how about DITRON and the easement? Would you like to comment?
Uh, yes. We have finally, as of...
When they are, sorry.
Robert Musari, Daniel's foreman, Musari represents DITRON. We have arrived at a agreement on the easement, and it is not yet circulated and signed, but counsel for Ms. Dixon and I have come to an agreement, and Mr. Nolan, Mr. Nolan's company and my client have come to an agreement on the crossing agreement. They have not yet been signed, and, and we've been circulating them immediately. They're prepared, they're in the final form, but they're not yet signed. The other thing that I wanted to make sure got into the plan, there was a meeting at DITRON a few weeks ago, a couple of weeks ago, I guess, with Mr. Nolan, there was one tree on the boundary line that was not going to be cut, that we identified, and also my client wanted all evergreens along the part of the boundary line by the parking lot. The rest of it would be, you know, whatever the mix was that had been proposed, but we just want to have evergreens along the parking lot.
So that's tree, that's tree number 257 that was on the line there that we confirmed would not be cut, so we can amend our plans to show that, right?
Yeah.
And the ever, and you're agreeable with the evergreens as requested in the 12-foot height or foot you, which your was?
I think it was 12.
It was 12.
You said from root, from about the top of the wood wall to, not the apex, but...
Right.
You used the...
Last year's growth.
Right, last year's growth, last year's growth. That's, that's, I believe, in there.
Yeah, yeah, we just have to confirm that ever, that there'll be evergreens.
Okay.
Probably do like varied species of evergreens.
That's fine, those are evergreens, and they're sufficient.
You don't want to let same species right in a row, they can...
Correct. Yeah, that's fine. Just want to be able to see, see the fields in the winter.
Got it.
Is the, where those are gonna be planted, isn't it a wet area?
I, I'm not sure. Along the edge of the DITRON, uh, just drive, parking yard. Yeah, I, I don't believe it's considered wetlands, so I don't think it's a wetland.
Isn't that prone to be wet?
Oh, it might be.
Rob, I don't know about you, but my experience is that in a wet condition, a Norway spruce does extremely well versus some other plants.
I think it tolerates it better than other plants, yeah.
So...
I mean, it's...
Maybe we should, maybe we should stipulate that the evergreens along the boundary of the DITRON parking lot, the Norway spruce?
Well, I mean, I, I always caution against doing a monoculture planting, because right, right now, if we planted all blue, blue spruces, they'd be all dead next to you. And you'd lose the whole screen. So you want to try to have a variety of plantings to protect your, your buffer into the future, okay? We never want to go in monoculture, that's always a big mistake. We have main streets throughout the country that were devastated by the Dutch elm disease, because every main street in the country wanted to have an elm tree, elm trees.
Elm Street.
Yeah, so I, the plan actually shows a variety of plants, including a significant amount of evergreens, and so I think they're already achieving what you're requesting with a lot of evergreens, but they're also achieving a diversity of plantings, which is also good for biodiversity, so we want that too. I know your client's concern is the view, but there are more concerns than the view, and, and I know that we have a shared concern of the survival, so it would be a good idea to have a mult, a diversity of plantings. With safe plantings like Norway spruces, they're always a safe at that. I think you had a lot, I, I don't remember what the plantings need, but you had a lot of red cedars, red cedars are good at, and they're tolerant of a lot of different conditions.
And how about if you specified Norway spruce and red cedar in that area?
C 2.1.
I think, I think the point is, is that they don't want to, they want an evergreen boundary.
Oh, they're getting it per design, it's there. I think, guys, we don't have to discuss it much, you've asked for it, it's already in it.
Yeah.
So I already have clicked that off, it's yes, they take care of it.
Yeah, our, our concern is only that during the winter months, when the leaves are off the trees, that we don't see the fields.
Um, they have black hill spruce.
Yeah.
So, and they have eastern red cedars, so would you want to ask them to change the black hill spruce to the old one? Or let, let's ask them why you chose black hill spruce.
Uh, we used the landscape architect to help us with that, so.
Yeah, I'm not very familiar with that one, the big man. Is that, is that what they have, what they make?
I, I would, the personal experience, I would say the Norway spruce, and if you say the red cedar, yeah, cedar will do well in wet areas also. So I think we should specify, at least in that area, the planting be those two species.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, I'd agree with dogwoods and the, you know, the, 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 too far in the wet too.
Yeah, but their concern is...
I, I understand their concern, but we also have a concern for biodiversity, and that's my concern.
Dogwoods are beautiful, it's great, so you, you get that, you know, in the spring.
But, but if you look at the planting, though, you'd have a...
Pretty dense.
A pretty dense buffer of everything.
All right, thank you.
I just, I just to reconfirm that the neighbor of clients that we met with them today, not taking any trees down along the boundary, were taking trees as specified, eight of them clustered and have been marked with a ribbon, and then all other ribbons have been removed along the boundary, because there was some confusion, there was color, I'll say color confusion there was along the boundary. So in any event, I, we met with them today to confirm that, that we, we're not doing that, not taking any trees down along the boundary.
And it's not just trees, it's, all vegetation should be...
Correct.
Right.
Hey, John? This time of year, does that barrier still provide screening?
Object screening, you, you associate the deal, you know, obviously with what you've set up, so it'd be quite harsh screening. You're talking about the existing tree line.
I'm talking about that, yeah, along the tree line. Would it be helpful if, here again, it's some evergreens of some sort were planted there to break it up?
Yeah, I think it...
Or is, or is it no cons, at this point, is it no, not a large concern?
Well, I think, you know, in the spirit of the ordinance that was written, it would say it was not visual from adjacent properties, and I would like to, well, spirit of that, and I know it was shared today that there's some screening being put in, some odd, yeah, three, three different plantings, but they're all three foot height, so, yeah, we're not high moving it's screening, that's also pretty big and sure.
So there, there's a, there's a line shown on the plan of, let's see, arrowwood viburnums, which has a 12-foot mature height, but of course, it does start out low. Winterberry holly is in there, that has a mature height of six to 10 feet, and, let's see, there's some gray dogwoods in there, and that would be mature height of 12 feet as well. All of them would be starting at the two to three foot height.
Speak up now or forever.
Oh, I, I, it hasn't changed, it, it's not providing, two to three feet is not providing screening unless sure it's lying out there.
We, we changed the design significantly to leave that vegetation that's there existing, and then supplementing that with...
I have a stand down, the discussion is, is that November, December, January, February, March, April, the panels are going to be seen, so...
Debatable, we, we have a set, the setback 150 feet from there, and there is significant screening out there too.
Yeah, can I just point out that one of the, from our perspective, the big distinction in terms of the height of the trees, is that the DITRON property and people who will be parking there are, you know, within the direct, within 300 feet or 150 feet of the actual panels, whereas in the case of the clients, we've, you know, we've, again, we've been working to try to address the concerns. They, I don't know how many, certainly at 500 to 1,000 feet to the, the location of that, of that residence. So we've, we're trying to address those concerns by offering plantings along the entire length, which we've detailed, and also not taking any of the vegetation down all the boundary, so we start getting into heights now on that distance, and, and it's gonna, our project is frankly already, it's been, it's very costly for us, given the size of the system, so respectfully request that we would keep what has been proposed. If we made any of these plantings higher, it would shade the system, which is why we cut, cut them lower, so like, you know, this is south of the system, the sun's coming from the south. If we make these go any higher, they, once they get mature, they're gonna provide significant shading on, you know, the front of our system, so that's why we...
It wasn't higher, it was, it was, well, my concern is at this time of year, but, all right, the difference between a...
What's wrong with another foot or two?
No, we're not, it's not the height.
It's not the height?
It's just the greenery this time of year.
Well, the winterberry holly will maintain, you mean, right? What about the...
Oh, no, the, the winterberry, no, right.
That will lose?
It'll, it'll actually, that story, you see with all the red berries in the winter?
Okay.
It's really cool looking, actually.
What do you propose? Do you have a compromise of any sort?
We're, we're, we're...
You don't want a compromise, you want to tell?
I think they've already compromised.
Yeah.
Tremendous.
All right. So you're in support of the way the plan is as...
They, I was being supportive last week, because when they made all these compromises, I think it's disingenuous for us to have another meeting and then add on to their compromise, and then have another meeting and then add on to their compromise. I sense a very bad precedent for the board, that whenever an applicant comes, as long as we just add more meetings, we'll get more compromise, we'll get more...
More changes.
Yeah, they've been very genuine about trying to accommodate the needs. Now, they're not gonna touch the existing buffer, they are going to add a buffer, at what point are we absolutely too much of the...
Being excessive, we don't like that.
Well, I'm, I'm trying to be fair, if, when they come to us and say, all right, if I move the line back here and I don't touch the buffer, are you gonna be okay with that? And we kind of say, that sounds like a good compromise, and then they come back to the next meeting, and it's, and then you say, well, you know what, we rethought it, and we want to negotiate from this point forward, I, I don't think it's...
I understand your point.
Also fair to the applicant.
All right, so there it is, all right?
I mean, that's just my opinion.
Yeah, anybody have any issues with...
It's not my opinion.
On the board?
That's fine.
It's not your opinion?
No, I under, I, for the record, I understand what Rob is saying completely.
Okay, because you two are the, you know, the tree men here.
I was just, I was just trying to...
The landscape architects, arborists.
Get them to switch some plant material out, but that's...
If, if, Rob, you feel it's adequate, and it's...
I feel it's a very thoughtful planting, that's, there are other factors that are, go into the consideration of those plants, which will have a result in survivability, which I think a lot of us are overlooking, and I can throw, I can throw 50 full-size evergreens out there, and day one, it's gonna look beautiful, but then by the, by the middle of the winter, they're all dead, because it's, they were giant trees, and the chance of them surviving, you know...
You know about Mrs. Klein is a birder?
Yeah.
She wants to make sure that her birds aren't gonna be affected, right, Mrs. Klein?
Right.
So that's what we're after.
Well, the planting scheme is gonna bring birds, actually.
Yeah, okay, all right, so I think we can move on at this point. You want to, you want to make sure that we finish this up now, or are we gonna go forward with what you indicated here, Dan?
That's, that's on the board, if you want to authorize me to prepare a resolution for your consideration, I will.
Yep, preliminary site plan approval, water resource permit, conditional final site plan approval, and special use permit approval.
So I would just ask, point out to the applicant to review the decommissioning statute under, under SOLO regs, so that when we do submit that plan, we're in compliance, just look at that, it's on our code.
Okay.
155 dash 43, it's SOLO entry systems.
Was the, was what we submitted previously reviewed under that statute, or, because it, they said it was, appears acceptable, I don't know, you said, and you'll provide guidance on the bond and associated agreements?
I don't recall if it, if it had an engineering stamp, but, well, now we can discuss that when you...
Okay.
It's gonna be part of your conditions anyway.
Right. Is the decommission plan for purposes of setting a bond?
Yes.
All right.
And factor of inflation.
Yeah.
So the total cost at today's, oh, that's the future value. Decommissioning cost, all right, so it's $100,000, and then, and then, and then to dispose of one, another $122,000. and then, and then to dispose of one, another 122,000, so 255,000 include. So that would be after 25 years with a 3%, inflation rate. That's the pen. Alright. So can I have a motion?
I think we need a motion on the table.
Okay. A second, Rob.
What, what is the motion?
The motion is draft a resolution of preliminary site plan approval, water resource permit, and conditional final site plan approval, and special use permit approval. Rob?
That's perfect.
You affirm that.
Can you second it?
I'll second it. So the vote, wanna do a roll call vote?
Roll call?
Okay. Let's grab into the panel.
Aye.
Mr. Gredo?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Rob, you'll paint aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr.
Alright.
We just prepared a resolution, and it's not quite clear.
Right.
We're almost there, we're not quite finished.
Yes.
Square away, make sure that
The ground, okay.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Hey, Rob. Would you look at this, this manliness somewhere? The module removal, the wiring removal and everything, it seems awful and expensive.
Well, he had 7% inflation issue.
Well, it's not even that, I don't know what the hours are that are involved, but you're not gonna
He just had a height, he never had to call that bar, and he ran a little sure that now it covers the boss. If it doesn't cover the boss, then we can't move it.
Your, your, my office, you thought it was within range, so
Said what?
You thought it was within the range, but if there's something specific you wanted to shoot me, you know.
I think, I think
A circle, and they're lining it up harder.
Right?
What should we do?
For the removal? Well, I don't know, but I'm I don't, I don't remember how many solar panels there are. But they're saying that to anticipate your payments, well, it's only gonna cost you less than $5,000.
Alright, I'm wondering.
You were powerful.
I should know. I didn't know about this, right? For all I know, you could be a spy. I thought you were spying for my wife, which you're on, and not somewhere else.
You know what?
Are you guys keeping Fernia?
Give another shot.
No, no. Okay.
They used to have a breakthrough second.
Got it. Well, hold on, there's just one.
Not for Fernia. Guys, I was actually on the fence about that, you know. But you're right, I really I got thrown off.
The solar.
It wasn't the solar, but it was the height, like three feet. So how long will it take those trees to reach?
Six years.
Some of them grow faster than others. That is correct.
You get a fully growth year.
Fully growth year, that's decent, yes. And then you have all that, that other stuff that's there anyway, and they're not touching the vegetation, so it's just a I mean
No, no, it's thick, it's thick, it's something like, my only reason to bring it in
One year.
We're gonna move on. Alright, so is Fernia Court? Is there a representative here for Fernia Court?
They, they called me and said that they weren't gonna be here, but I can, I can give you a brief
Alright.
Description of what's going on, so this is something that was approved by the planning board, it's a site plan special use permit for a contract building, storage building. And the site plan, the conditions of the site plan were satisfied, the site plan was actually signed. But we have a provision in our code, for a special use permit, if you don't start the construction of it within one year and finish it within two, you lose the approval for So what we've done is we've, we've prepared a resolution for a special use permit reapproval here. And, and I spoke to the applicant about some of the provisions here, which was that we're, we're assuming that the existing signed site plan is still gonna be in effect, and that there were no changes to it, and he agreed with that. So that's how it's written in the, in the resolution here before you. And then, the intent would be that you would have now a new year from today to start construction. The real issues he's having with it, a lot of it is economic related. He was looking for tenants before he was building, thinking about things like that, so he's been juggling some things around with that, but he didn't find anybody that he wanted at this point, or that wanted his space there, so
Right.
That's where he's at.
Okay.
It looks like he's selling the property, I see it.
He does have a sign up for it, so it's, it's possible that he's selling, selling it, but he wouldn't be selling it with a an approved project at this point, you know, because the special use permit has expired.
So you are asking us to take action on that, or approve, or reapprove?
Yeah, and there's no substantive changes, like I said, there's no change to the site plan, nothing that would warrant reopening seeker or anything to that effect, so
If he sold, if he sells the property
Special use disappears.
Yeah, special use, right, that's right, special use disappears, right?
That's right, they'd have to, they'd have to come back, they'd longer look.
I'm sorry, Dan, you're special uses for architectural use, is that what it was?
No, it's just the, the zone, the contracted storage yard is the new classified use, so that zone requires special use permit.
Oh, I see. Yeah, and when he was here before us, he said that it was his intention to occupy it, he either had his own yard there.
Right.
Yeah.
Now, he was a forced sell side there, so
I think he's running a test. Financial.
Would you say that?
Financial effects. He, he has a spec house, he hasn't sold. Big one. Should speak for him, but
Alright, so we want to grant a, we're gonna reapprove.
Based on the resolution?
Basically, the draft, yes. Alright, let's all move.
Okay.
I'll second.
You need a minute?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, we can still have
You can amend, you can do whatever you want.
Alright.
We can still have a discuss?
Yep.
And you can amend.
So the, the approvals for a one-year extension?
Of the, of the special use permit, that's right. Which is consistent with our code. Section 155 dash 60A is related to special use permits and the next, specific to the expiration of special use permits. So if you haven't started construction within one year and completed it within two, expires.
Yeah. There's reasons for that, why we have a litigation, otherwise we don't have a litigation at all.
Yeah, but in this case, part of it is economic, I think.
Yeah, well, I don't think we're supposed to consider that, you know, needs in line, you know, having a hard time selling. It's not really agree, I'm willing to one, this one time, you know. It's more about selling this thing. I mean, this is the best
How long is it, what is, what is the code, huh?
One year.
One year.
One year.
There was a pandemic, that I'm sure interfered, I mean, interest rates are going up. The market, I think, markets isn't going to be performing that well going forward, but we'll see what happens.
In the last 12 months, you know, people are selling stuff like crazy.
Right, right.
With big money.
In anticipation, sure.
So if he didn't sell it in the last 12 months, what's the chance of selling it?
This requires, Rob, in all respect, is, he's got a special use permit, he can't sell that.
No.
He can only sell the property.
Right.
He'd have to build the building, and even at that, if he wanted to then sell it to somebody else, they'd have to come and get a special use. It does not go with the land, it goes with the owner.
Very small.
So he's in a bind, yeah, actually.
Yeah, no, I sympathize. My thing is, he wanted to, he pitched it as, hey, this is my yard, but this is for me, and
Right.
You know, he subcontracted it out, subletting it, yeah.
And I feel like we keep falling for that line. And it's a being
You have two options, you can not consider it tonight, and you can ask him to come in and explain it in December, or you can consider it.
No, I, I think, I'm prepared to consider it, I just, I just want it out there that, that I'm not gonna conserve multiple
Right.
Extensions of extension.
Oh, I could, I wanna get in for that.
I just want to put on the record, that's a frank in the extension, but please do go ahead and sell it. Or, or do, do whatever, we're selling it, still.
Will that be in the
So what we could do is, you could do, you could say that the draft resolution with a sixth condition, because there are a lot of conditions on here, and just have it that this would be the only extension of the special use permit.
Yeah. I think do that, do that, Dan.
You need a vote, Dan?
Yes.
Okay. So the motion is to grant a one-time extension for the special use permit.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright. Are there any apples in the audience? Okay, so a little background. So I've had, I've had meetings with Ag Market regarding this application in history. There was Farm Stand versus the market. And the applicant has now changed the the title of the application is now agricultural use, and he's added the property into his farm. I spoke with the planner at Ag Market, and our purpose here is to protect the, the safety, health, and welfare of everybody in the community. But as a farmer, he has a right to market products that he grows. And marketing means selling, and, and all of the advertising that goes along with that. Now, there are percentages that Ag Market refers to. Magic number is 70%, but it's very ambiguous about where that 70% comes from, okay? There's peaks and valleys, and that can be discussed, and you can tell me more about that, whether or not what I'm saying is right or wrong. But during these valleys, the applicant has, the farmer has the opportunity to bring in other products from other farms. Because that, that serves the purpose of keeping farms thriving during the different peaks and valleys that existed in their, their business model. So we had a meeting between the town engineer and the lawyer, John First, as well as the, the new code enforcement and building inspector, Jess. And there is no concern, she's, she's, John First is gonna draft a letter. There isn't concern about the use or the description at this point.
Yeah, I think the, the wording she has is that she didn't have a concern that it generally met the conformance with the the definition of agriculture, so long as Ag and Market regulations were followed as well.
Right.
In terms of the marketing portion of that definition.
So, did I, did I understand at one point there was gonna be a cat fight or something?
Well, so we're gonna get into that now. Your name, Dan?
I'm Victoria Corodoro, attorney for the applicants, I can start, and I can address all the comments.
Janice?
Yeah, Janice is here as well.
Janice, hi, Janice, how are you? So I found your letter a little difficult to follow. Alright, and I'd like to avoid that approach, if you don't mind, alright? I'd like to start with the fact that we've approved our, the use, and a letter will be forthcoming.
I wasn't really aware of that until today.
Okay, alright.
You know, I think, you know, we're here freshly, we're, we're wanna work with the board collaboratively, but you know, there has been a level of frustration between everyone, you know, this application was last before you in July 2021. Since then, as you've noted, there've been some changes. We've repackaged it as an agriculture use, in sort of the Farm Stand. The parcel is now in the Ag District, which gives it protections under the New York State law. And there's no longer a special use permit requirement, so
That's because the property was annexed into the farm.
So that's not quite right, it was not annexed, the lot line hasn't changed. Actually, let me just start, by the way, this is a letter just explaining that the two owners are co-applicants. are co-applicants, Barton Education Company and Line Ridge. So, in New York, farms can be made up of multiple, yeah, there's three copies, so.
Oh, that's logical.
Sure. Farms can be made up of multiple parcels, it's not uncommon to have one farm, you know, be spread out, farms in town, state county, sure, and sometimes they're even in different ownership, because, you know, one, for estate planning purposes, it goes to the son, it goes to the daughter, for whatever reason, but it's all considered a farm. When you get an Ag assessment in New York, and you fill out the Ag assessment form, it even recognizes that, there's a place to list all the related farms, and you just have to add up the total acreage. So here, we are dealing with a project on a 3.87 acre parcel, can you flip it right there? But that 3.87 is part, so it's part and parcel of the larger Barton Orchards Farm. So, it has been annexed into the farm for business purposes, but the lot line at this point remains.
Okay, but it has no bearing on your right to market?
Correct, in, in New York, it's not uncommon for farmers to actually find parcels like this on the road, because it helps on-farm marketing. Actually, if you go up in linebacker, the former Hobson's is now going to be a farm market, it's now in the Ag District, because there was a farm that decided that was a nice spot to market some vegetables. So that's where we are, I'm glad to hear that the use is now going to be in agricultural use, I think it's going to smooth things along. There was a question that came up about the cafe, in New York, you can have a cafe accessory to the farm, so that in and of itself does not mean it's no longer an agriculture use, it's part and parcel of it, this one does have a cafe proposed, and when you talk about the percentage of goods, we actually agree it's 51% has to be right in the farm, not 70, I think that's what's in the guidance from Ag and Markets, and it does have to do with the peak season, right? If you are, if you're offering apples and cherries, but you want to sell something in between, you need to be able to always have something to sell in your store, also, if you're marketing apples, he's not growing the flower, right? You need to buy the flower to make the apple muffins and the apple pies, and so that's all recognized as part of on-farm marketing.
So, if I can jump in, because I, I was looking for clarification, so 51% is Barton's responsibility?
Correct.
And then, yeah, so, okay.
And it's an average over the year?
An average over the year.
Because it's seasonal.
And then, the difference between, I believe, you correct me if I'm wrong, I, I was going to look up his name, he's in charge of planning for Ag Market.
It used to be Bob Somers, and now we're just someone else.
Yeah, so, the, the difference, the other 29%, which I don't know how you quantify any of this, I'm just curious, so it's, it's really a moot point, but you, you bring in other farms' products, right?
It's other farms, but sometimes it's also flour from, not a farm, right? I think, because you have to make the apple pies.
Well, he spoke about meat, and honey, and syrup, and eggs, and.
Right, he wanted to have a variety of offerings, and I think the idea here, I mean, he's going to keep records, and you can check his books, but the idea here is that farming is protected in the New York State Constitution, in New York, we want to keep farms thriving, it keeps our open space, it provides, it provides for the economy, and so we don't want to make it so hard for farmers, we want to give them flexibility, and so in a year, like this year when there was a big drought, you know, maybe the town, you know, maybe it's impossible to meet that 50%, but over time, that's what you're supposed to strive for, is an average of 51% of goods on the farm being sort of the farm market.
Good, I appreciate that information, and that's really what was the purpose of the engineer and attorney, to, the purposes of their, their communications were to get these, these pieces of information so that we could be informed, and some of the questions that, that I have, specifically, and then, if you have more, but maybe this will whittle it down a bit.
Sure.
Dan is going to, is going to talk specifically about some items that have to do with the plan, but I, I want to talk about the entrance, so, we all know what the, the public hearing was like, right, and the zoning board meeting, now, I want to address some of the concerns of the neighbors in the area, one of their concerns is the traffic and bottlenecks that goes on. Now, it only goes on a couple times a year.
During the special events.
The special events, yeah. What, what was the cause of the, the abandonment of the driveway to Treetop, which I know is a whole separate project, and it has nothing to do with this at all, but in terms of the traffic, now we're using the main entrance, right?
So, I mean, I, I don't know if you want to address specifically the concern, but since COVID, Treetop has been underutilized, and the applicant is going to suspend that operation for the time being?
I actually wanted, you know, I, Torzyn, I wanted to first go with Torzyn, I don't know if you guys know, but this morning, a resident was awarded the Torzyn Award, and here's some papers from Torzyn, please, so, what the farm does to the town of people, maybe a lot of you don't understand, the economic drive for the county, well, not only myself, but.
I'm sorry, what is this? You got, you received this?
Yes, as far as.
By the way, I want to say how sorry I am about that fire.
Well, that's why I'm here, because of the fire, because of everything that's happened.
You didn't agree?
No, he needs, he needs that back, he can take a photo of it.
Maybe I was a short word I ever received, I know, and it was, it was an incredible uplift today, considering what I've been through this year.
You've been through a lot.
You've talked about Treetop, when I was in front of this, actually, let's take that back, most, all of you were not on the planning board at the time of Treetop, that planning board that was there at that time, I think, I think a lot of us, we realized, you know, it's been restructured, no, I'm talking the planning board at the time, this whole planning board was restructured, so when I went through with Treetop, I don't think the whole idea about Treetop was understood, so it was all this, we had this road coming in off of my other project, it went all the way down, John Bordenorf at the time, so it wasn't Dan, was handling the whole project, and then all of a sudden, John just disappeared, and I think some of the plans for the whole thing disappeared, and I think that created a little angst, but everything, but this whole idea that the driveway was coming all the way down, I was asked to post a $45,000 bond for nothing, it was just, there was no impact at all, so Treetop, COVID has changed Treetop, it's changed a lot of things.
Yes.
So, do I have a sign on my main sign there that we're talking about, taking it off, Treetop's coming off, ice cream's coming off, I don't have an ice cream problem anymore. So, a lot of things have changed in my life right now, so, I don't even have a Farm Stand because of the fire, and.
What was, which building was actually destroyed?
It was the Farm Stand building.
I lost two major buildings.
The Farm Stand building and where you produce.
Yeah, that propane truck was sitting right in between the two, and when that driver, everything went wrong, and that driver just dropped and ran, we had four minutes to run ourselves before this was.
So you could rob, you got to buy a electric, a lightning bolt.
You know, John, but, and I'm in front of you to try to spend money in this town to take my business forward.
So we're not here, we're not here to put any harsh restrictions, what we have to do, though, is consider, right, the neighbors.
Fine.
Health, safety.
So, I have 500 homes next to my farm.
Yes.
I own 182 acres next to Dalton Farm, how many voices out of Dalton are the concern? I have so many customers that come from Dalton Farms all the time, they love it, they praise it, it's, it's, are we going to listen to like the voices in Woods?
Listen, I listen to every voice, just so you know.
Well, I agree with you, and so do I, but then there's a reason with it all too, John.
We're just asking that the board review this application, but the level, level of reasonableness required by Ag Markets.
So here's what the board does, though, alright, now, we rely on our professionals, they ask questions, and I think it's fair, professionally speaking, to answer them respectfully, alright, and then, if we have more questions, then.
We're here, we're here to answer all of the questions.
I totally agree, John, I think the problem is, I'm sorry, the problem is, we did not get the questions, that is the problem.
Alright, let's move on.
Mr. Chair.
No, no, actually, I would like to speak.
But, I mean, so I think, at the beginning of the meeting, based on the information we have, I think we're all in consensus, at least the consultants, that this is agricultural use, we spoke to the building inspector, she also confirmed that she believes it's an agricultural use, I had some questions that I had posed to the attorney, because I wanted to make sure, because I went through Ag and Markets and with you, with the percentages, and what's off farm, what's on farm, I, I think we have most of the answers we need, so I think we can kind of move on from that point.
Right, yeah.
And we'll have a letter, the building inspector will file a letter, it'll protect us and you, and then, I think for now, I mean, honestly, I would have Joe go through the site plan, and let's start talking about some of the site plan issues, and then after that, then Dan can go through his memo, because he's got some more site plan questions, and we can focus on the site plan.
That's, just, just, I don't, I don't want to go backwards, I just want clarification for myself, so 51% of the sales sold products is supposed to come from orchard, but we have, we have a frost in May, and Peter loses his apples, can he then bring in from meat from somebody else to keep his market moving, because he's got a hardship?
I mean, that's the idea, that there's flexibility, and in that case, if the town says, you have to shut down your farm market, we would probably appeal to Ag Markets and say, you know, given this hardship and the circumstance, this is unreasonable.
Yeah, the, the Ag and Markets guidelines are kind of very flexible, and very gray, probably for a reason, because farming isn't so predictable, so I think there's got to be some understanding that it's not a hard and fast, you know, 51%, I mean, how does somebody go through a farm market and calculate what's, what was, what was produced on the farm, what was produced off the farm, you know, it gets a little, but I think the idea, I think the idea from their description, at least everything they're telling us on paper, you know, this, this is an agricultural use.
It, it's not a hard and fast 51%, it's a guideline.
Right.
And so, that's like the.
I have a question.
Sure.
At the time of Treetop, there was to be done a traffic study, and was to be an approval before the final.
We, we did do.
Final draft was, was to be signed, and I never heard that, that study.
Wasn't masked.
Had, there was a stud, there was a study done, but it had to be approved by the, by the county, I believe.
Yeah, that, my, my understanding and my recollection of that is that the county approved it, there was a traffic management plan that was prepared, and that was intended to deal with the larger events.
But it was not brought to.
No, I mean, it was copied on the approval, but it was, it was post-approval by this board, so.
It was a condition of the approval for the site plan, special use, which is why that was never, ever finalized.
It took a year for the county to sign off on it.
I don't care, Peter, how long it took.
But it did, they signed off on it.
Pandemic and moving, yeah.
Well.
Creating delays.
Yeah, it was pre-pandemic.
But, we didn't come back before you, because it was a condition, and so the county and the board.
I think the point that Pete is referring to is the same as mine, and Dan will speak about it as well, we have bottlenecking there, so I understand you're going to suspend it for now, but now, if we add to that your regular business for the farm, the taproom, now we have the, the market.
Honestly, this is not adding any business, because there was a market, which is gone.
Okay.
So, this is, this is replacing.
That's, that's a valid point.
This is replacing, and I'm trying to make it easier, because people can go in and out.
If, if you mind, let's give them a chance to present, because I'm a little bit way out there on what's going on, maybe you can just summarize something.
Yeah, we'll go through the plans.
Tell us, I was involved in your meetings, so I was privy to anything that happened.
That's why I shared it.
So, if you wouldn't mind just summarizing what makes, what you're planning on doing here, and, and show us the site plan, and let's go from there.
Joe, Joe's going to go through the site plan in a moment, I just want to end with that when he's done, I'm asking and hoping that the board tonight will accept the application, I know that you have a truncated schedule because of the holiday in December, but we would like you to schedule the public hearing and allow us to resubmit, Joe can turn it around pretty quickly, so that we can.
I think we're getting a little ahead of ourselves right yet, why don't you start with the presentation?
Yeah, yeah, but I, I have to ask, and so I don't really know what we're looking for tonight.
I appreciate it, yeah, always good to ask, but.
I'll ask again, too.
That's fine, yeah, you've got to be prepared, and I hope you understand that, because there is going to, that's a public hearing, right?
We, we went through this with Treetop, we, we don't, we don't expect.
We're not, we're not resisting you at all, but you need to be prepared, so why don't you start with what you're.
So, this is Joe Berger, civil engineer, and he's going to go through the plans.
Good evening, you guys have seen me here before, it's not, basically, you have the project going with entries, we're starting off with connecting to the existing drive.
Can you stand on the other side of the mat?
Sure. So, our driveway would connect to the existing drive, that was actually an early on discussion with the board and with John Bordenorf at the time, who suggested we stay off the road and come off there, so, we started the project with suggestions from everybody to do it this way, the building is 1670 square feet, we have an addition of 2100, additional square feet in order to get the square footage we need for the market, we're putting a parking lot in the front and on the side with electrical charging stations, handicap off the side so it's easier access in, our septic system will be in the front, and our stone water is going to be treated through a bio-retention out in the lower part of the site, where it drains now, we're using the existing well that's up on top, there's a 100-foot scenic buffer along the road, and Dan pointed out his comments, and I'll just respond to it now, we do have the septic and the bio-retention within that scenic buffer, we feel that that's a lawn area, and we will replace it as a lawn, so it will still stay open space, and to provide the scenic nature, we're bracketing it with trees here, here, and here, so we'll have scenic buffer from the road, and we'll have a lawn, basically a giant lawn in the front, that you're looking out onto, the bio-retention, which is not just a pond, but if you look at some of the really nice bio-retentions, they're full of plants, they look nice, if they're done properly, and we plant the wood properly, my client's a farmer, he knows how to plant things, and that's in the little area where all the water goes, that's the perfect place for bio-retention, and even though we'll be in the open space, it will provide greenery within that open space, so we feel it's kind of in spirit of what open space should provide, but that's up to the board to decide, if the board chooses, asks me to relocate these outside, we certainly will do that, pretty straightforward on that.
How many parking spaces?
There's 30 parking spaces, four handicap spaces. Attorney told me I miscounted, 45 spaces, she's correct.
45.
My bad.
For the record, to be honest.
I got to learn to count, go back to school.
Humans have memories like elephants, so.
No, just miscount it.
So is that.
No excuses.
That's just it.
In a nutshell, here to answer questions. There's going to be addition on the back, that will be for more square footage and more for where you're going to process the, the produce.
Have you been to LaGrange? No, the store on Knox.
The store on Knox, alright.
So the store on Knox, what my vision here is the store on Knox Road, but a place for somebody to actually take something that we're making, baking, or a produce, and be able to sit down with a laptop, be able to have a little time, you know, and that's why it's kind of like a little bit more than what the LaGrange location is.
But, this is where the cafe is, it's really not a cafe, we're going in, getting a waiter, and getting, if you're going in to buy the muffin, maybe a couple of apple carts, sit down with a cup of coffee with some friends, read a book.
It's an 1840s main part of the house, the vision is that that's really where people are going to, the sales area will be the congregation, we want to keep some of the walls, and some of the old plaster walls, that we want to highlight some of the beams over there, I don't know, I, I always wanted to build a farm stand down the front of my farm, and the property I had could not warrant it, and the fact that I was able to buy this parcel right next door, by the way, this was the house of the farm, by the way, I'm one of the few people in this town that's actually buying pieces of property and putting things back together, buying the Lit Towers property was originally part of the whole farm, I just bought a house up on Limeridge Road, which was part of the whole farm, I'm not developing, I'm putting things back together, I'm an anomaly here, and I come in front of the board, and I want to. And I come in front of the board and I want to build and spend more money in this town to make this town a better place that all of us can kind of congregate in because we don't really have that much to do.
Are you selling alcohol in this?
So my idea is I'd like to start doing some hard cider over in LaGrange because I have a warehouse over there. So that's my vision now, is do hard cider over there. And I would be able to have the hard cider here, of course.
But he already has a hard cider.
I already have a liquor license anyway on the farm. I have a liquor license, I sell local cider, I sell a lot of local.
There's already a taproom, so this is not, this is not being secretly built as a taproom. There's already a large taproom on the farm, so he may sell cider out here in the future.
Don't misunderstand, well, me personally, I thought, what I got confused about was that it was mentioned that it was going to be a future consideration. But I had already, my wheels were turning, that it was something that you were designing into this plan. And the percentages, the report to me was you're an apple orchard and I pictured the cider getting turned into hard cider. And that was what you were going to be doing in that area.
In this area?
So are you doing a cidery at this location?
No, not a cidery.
No tasting or anything?
Well, I'm not saying tasting, of course. I can make my product in LaGrange. I have a fifteen thousand square foot warehouse on LaGrange, I can do my production there. And I can bring that product back. I won't have really anything on LaGrange per se, although I have the twenty-two acres there. I have visions over there too. I have visions of Deekman, one of them being just to replace my farm stand, beginning with that I don't have.
My question to you, now to me a cidery, like a brewery, right? You're going to, people are going to sit and they're going to taste your cider. And you're going to sell it there. Is that, is that what, I don't want to feed you.
That will be one of the many things sold in this farm stand.
Is that something we're considering under this application?
Are you considering under this application?
Right, so you're considering a farm stand. And so the farm stand can sell anything from farm market, anything.
As a farmer, if I make a product, I can sell the product.
Oh, I'm not saying you can't.
Right, so I would say yes. You should, at some point, he may be selling cider made from apples grown on his farm.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Peter.
Peter, since the fire, is this going to be the principal market area? So in other words, I guess what I'm, in a roundabout way, I'm asking, the buildings that were burned were market. That was where your market area was, right?
One of them was market, the other one was the bakery and all the other shops, yes, the two big buildings, correct.
Okay, now is that going to be resurrected up there? Or is this going to be, this going to be the principal?
I think what's going to happen now because of this, at my young age and the reset in my life, that's right, I know, I'm not saying I'm aging. I don't think you're ever going to see those buildings totally built up there. It's just too much of an initiative. This building vision is to supply the community all year long. As far as in the fall, when I have, no, that's, it's a whole different area. We did a small little bakery this year up there in the temporary building. I think that's what we're going to make, a permanent bakery up there. So, but my season's going to change too. I'm not going to be open as much as I was at all. After the fire, everything's changed in my life, okay? So we're looking, I'm looking at maybe not even opening up until like maybe early August now. I'm going back to what I was twenty-eight years ago, whatever, thirty years ago. So.
With that part.
That way, that being said, that's why if this is down front, then this is something I can focus on most all the year. And then in the fall, I just had, like, you know, the late August, September, October, where the crops are really being harvested by the public, tourism, bringing money into the community, into the county. But other than that, like, ten months out of the year, this down front would be the anchor, yes.
But Peter, if you found you had enough of an attraction to have both a farm market where people come into the foreign area and on Deekman who are quite grown, there's no reason why you couldn't do both if it were economically feasible.
It's true.
You're not limited.
Faye, I agree with you. I think right now, this, look, where I am with this disaster we have, right? This is the vision right now. This is what I'm focusing on. Because there's no way I'm going to do something right away, what was there. I'm just not going to be able to create it as much as it was. It was years and years and years of building that facility up to where it was.
But we are in no way limiting the future potential of the farm. I just want to be clear, this application is simply for the building I front.
He's moving production right forward.
He wants to produce up there, doesn't he?
Right, there's no intention at this point to do anything else. And, you know, when and if that time comes, we'll go through the appropriate process.
Right. And all, the questions are just for us to be prepared and know when we're asked. You know, and meet the, you know, the Agco Market guidance or regulations. So that, that then, you know, is what makes it all understandable and right.
Right.
Thirty percent cherry wine.
Thirty percent cherry wine?
Yeah. I've never had cherry wine, have you son?
I have fantastic, Dan, a line of wine.
Is there a question?
So, yeah, you're right. Okay, so the, Dan, just if we could knock off some of the important points, you want to.
Why don't we let Bob go first since we're already talking?
The, on existing conditions, man, it shows a wooded area around the house. And I'm wondering how much of that wood area is still there? I noticed you did do some plantings in front of the parking lot, which is closer to the parking lot. It begs the question, why don't you do the buffer closer to the property line? But I noticed on the existing conditions, there's woods along the property. Although, is that accurate? And are you intending not to, are you intending to leave those woods alone?
There's really only one or two homes that are right by where this house sits, which is far enough. Absolutely what it is doing, it's how far it is away. And we had proposed screening in that area of that one area route. And it is, you know, I mean, it's wooded, it's underbrush and all that right now, but we did propose to put some lighting there. Other than that, that lot is pretty wooded and screened.
So the reason that those particular woods that were going to disappear, if you look, I think you're talking about this section here.
No, I'm talking along between the property lines with the two houses.
You're talking about right here.
We're talking about here, because here the septic has to go in and the drainage.
I'm talking about where people.
Right. But if you see how far the house is, the dwelling is even from the property line and from those homes. By the way, those homes have barely anything in their backyard.
They go right up to your.
Right, they go right up to the property line, so you talk about screening.
Same with our farm, I know, I know.
And don't even.
They'll come down right up to our property.
Don't even be going on all the other properties. That border of my whole property that have a thirty-foot buffer, which have nothing. I like to live with all my neighbors and I have, I live with almost all my neighbors in peace. There's a couple of them, there will always be a couple of them. But most of them are violating all that buffer that was created from a planning board of the town impeachment.
It's out of conservation, isn't it?
And the eighty's nice.
But I'm really just trying to get some raw facts here.
It's all they've got.
Describe to me the edge of that spot. According to, according to your. According to your existing conditions, man, it's wooded along that edge, isn't it?
Well, it's, yeah, it's not heavy woods, it's just a dash to where some of them are brush, some were trees. It's not a heavy, heavy woods.
I agree with the one house, the one neighbor.
Planting there would actually remove the existing buffer. That's why you would be planting buffer there, you want to keep the wooded edge there.
No, no, I agree, the one house, the one gentleman that seems to have a lot of woods, it's underbrush, it's not really heavily wooded. That's where we're proposing screening, he's not going to see it.
And we propose screening right here and screening here. From those houses, we put them right where the houses look, so it's blocking their view.
Isn't it true that when you put it closer to the headlights too, that it blocks the headlights more here?
We get by elevation. If we put those trees down here, you're going to see right over top of them. We're putting them right by the parking, so they're going to block.
All right, that answers my question, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, what is the code on that, Dan? Because it's a hundred foot?
Up to two.
To what? The buffer, okay, from the commons, where the driveway, the old driveway is. So that vegetated buffer that was there, what is required?
So along, along the county road, scenic road, scenic boucher overlay, which is supposed to be a continuous vegetated buffer with exceptions for maybe access. Because of course you need access to the road that is the scenic road. They're, they're taking away the access from the county road, but they're also putting a lot of things in there that get rid of that continuous vegetated buffer. But part of the, part of the concept I was mentioning in here is that there could be some swapping and relocating of certain things on here for your consideration so that it could be more of a vegetated buffer along there. So for example, the septic system could maybe go where the circular turnaround is over there and the parking go on the opposite side of the house. You know, and then the bio-retention area could be down along the bottom side of the parking so that it limits some of those things and then we can rebuff.
This area here would be cutting out so many trees. We would be cutting down so many trees, Rob, if you went there and saw it.
Right, so those trees on the survey too then.
Can I ask why the meadows doesn't have a scenic road? Why do I drive up Deekman Popeake Road and I can see every house in the meadows?
When was the meadows built?
So regarding, regarding that, this one hundred foot buffer, this is the type of regulation in your zoning law which should be reading this reasonableness standard into and some flexibility? Because again, this is an agricultural farm use. And so these are the types of places where state law says you don't have to be so strict with those kinds of standards. I mean, I don't know if this is like a firm one hundred foot buffer or if it's a general, you should try not to.
It says a continuous vegetated buffer with exception of access.
So I mean, I think we're, we will be putting vegetation within the bio-retention pond. There will be vegetation and that will be continuous along with the trees. So it would be reasonable to find that we are meeting that criteria with what's proposed now.
For a hundred foot depth.
Now what we also have to consider here is, is the neighbors, right?
Well, across the street, there is no vegetation.
Exactly, this is what I'm centered.
It's a moat, it's a moat lot.
Please, why am I held to a higher standard than my five hundred neighbors by me?
So you've got, it's not a higher standard. Now you've got people living there, right, they bought houses.
I was there before that.
I understand, but now the area is becoming something else. A parking lot, all right? Now, if you're going to put a parking lot in their backyard, and it's not directly in their backyard, that is something that myself, this is a good time to contemplate that and consider it. That's all I'm saying. If you're going to put a parking, if you put it on the other side, the parking lot now is not in the backyard of your neighbors.
Okay, so we're going to cut down all the wood of the lot.
I didn't, I didn't know it was wooded. It's not indicated on the plan.
The existing condition shows it.
Oh, yeah?
It's not the individual trees, but it does show the tree.
It wasn't two neighbors, we're not.
A hundred acres of acres we're talking to neighbors, please.
Because this is where we have it going right now. And actually, a lot of that area is a hundred foot deep right now, and this is in a lot of woods. And this was the old road, the old road was there. So just showing you where it's going, if you guys look to the side, this is where you would be putting it. So we could certainly locate all those trees, but the important thing is the edge of where they are. And that's where the edge is.
I'm not following you.
The edge is right here. So all the septic system, if you move, park would here, would be, all of this would go. Everything right up to the property line would go. And a lot of this would go to, if you're moving this still over here. And then the septic would go here, so a lot of this would go.
Actually, you know what, I like that idea. I'll clear cut that whole spot and have the parking on that side of the house, it'd be great.
The reason we, the reason we moved it, we're just giving you a block, we did.
I think we're just having a hard time moving stuff, okay? There's not a lot of information on there for us to picture this. I'm trusting you, Pete, that you're saying to us that there's pretty heavy woods on that side, you're trying to protect it.
Why don't we schedule a site visit? We can go there and meet.
No, I'm not kidding. I'll do whatever you want. If you want me to cut down all those trees, I'll do it, I'll put the parking on that side of the house. Then my neighbor doesn't have to worry about it, although my neighbor's so far away. My gosh, dinner will be over that way, it's over by my property, I have no problem with that.
Peter, Peter, before we cut trees, why don't we schedule a site visit for some of the board members?
We'll have a conversation about what a lot is.
It's actually, that's.
I just want to know, I want to front step, I want to know.
And the sidewalk, I want to know if it's actually very nice, very nice, old trees.
So what you need to make this possible is, most of you don't know that the county road actually swung towards the house. It's there. So you're talking about the scenic highway thing. The county moved the road over when they built Dalton to straighten it out, okay? So that's why everything got pushed over. Our, we used to drive right back behind the house when I was a kid. The house that I bought, we used to go right behind it. There's actually a roadway right there elevated. It's all a wooded lot right now. Last time we went there was probably thirty-five, forty years ago when we drove that way. But the county road is there, it's still there, there's still block.
Well, I think, I think the scenic roads was mentioned in twenty-eleven when the zoning board was all in place. You might have been on the.
I don't know where you were on the map.
I was on it in twenty-eleven, I was on the town board.
Honestly, though, what I think the point here is that moving the septic ends up.
Nobody said anything about moving the septic.
No, actually, you did.
Sure, sure I did, because it's a hundred foot continuous vegetated buffer there.
So that's what I'm trying to address.
There's a way to, you know, give you guys alternatives for your consideration.
Correct, and that's all the planning board is doing.
Possibly, I think, does it always make sense?
The planning board is just considering alternatives, I mean, that's their job. They look at a site and they try to figure out what can minimize the impact. Is the parking better in place X or place Y? I mean, it's just part of the process. Dan, I think you had some other comments, were there any, because we talked about the parking, the scenic road. Were there any other questions you wanted to talk about?
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, we think that this is a type two action in terms of standards, so there's just something, you know. It's less than four thousand square meters for an area, so we believe it's type two.
This is all billings.
We're going to need the outdoor lighting, of course, before we go into, before we go into a public hearing. Photometrics, et cetera. I didn't want to do that until the site plan was.
This is numbers.
Those are the things you just don't want to spend money on, we're going to change the layout. And so then if there's a discussion about alternatives, obviously, you know, if it helps push the process along, you might need to talk to your client about spending the money to do the photometric for both options if you're going to present two options.
I, well, ask Agco Markets if that's, that's where I'm. This is agriculture, please, okay? I don't know if you all are aware, I have two applications in front of this town right now, so I pay twice. I have two escrow funds for this project. I don't know of any other applicant that comes in front of you and has asked for that. Do you know that, Rob? This is, you wonder why my frustration's here? Who was asked to pay double for it?
All right, enough, all right, let's just focus on the issues. I mean, the escrow is going to be returned.
I'm sorry, can I thank you for being part of this?
It's got in the process by the town board, can I speak? You two are talking, can I please speak? I've been listening, I'm new here, but this is enough, it's just been a train wreck, I mean.
It is a train wreck, it is.
So let's just focus, your escrow has got to be processed through the town board and it will be returned. That is the process under their escrow law, okay? So one of those will be returned. I don't know why they, you know, that was their decision, they couldn't just apply it to this new application. So here we are, we have a new application, we're talking about site plan issues. There was suggestions about maybe moving the parking lot. Maybe we don't move the parking lot because you'll have to take down some more trees. That is consideration that the engineer has raised, the board is considering it. You're countering the engineer's comments. The engineer made comments about, you know, the stormwater and the septic up front. I mean, let's address why you don't think we should move those, whether it's because there's woods or trees, you know, that's toward to weigh and consider as part of the site. I don't want to talk about escrows or ended applications or.
Here's, here's the point, all right? Now, you keep saying it's only one or two neighbors, all right? Those are the, those are the one or two neighbors that are actually speaking up and talking. I feel that when we're sitting here and we're in front of them at a public hearing, it's going to be a different story. So I'd like, I'd like to know exactly why you don't like the idea. I can't picture what is in that area. So if you can maybe comment further about why moving the parking lot to the other side and moving the septic.
Well, it's a second.
Is it a financial problem? Is it?
No, if you move the septic over here, well, and moving the parking all the way over here, the reason we didn't put the parking here to begin with, we chose the minimum cutting of trees. This area was pretty much disturbed already. We felt that if we kept the septic in here, it's lower, so it's easy to drain to. It's an easier system. The building would be creating on in the area, which is bracketed with trees, so you have the open space, which is blocked from the road, which was in the intent. It never talks about the entire 100 feet being trees every five feet. It just has to be wooded in some manner. I know it's interpretation of planning board has to make. But that's our logic, that it wouldn't be. The bio retention would put in the low area for the water for the entire site to go. That's where it goes. I feel that a properly built bio retention, which we've done many of, looks very nice. Properly maintained. We certainly have a client here. My client knows how to take care of plants and bio retention. It'll be a beautiful one. And that's no different than trees or anything else in an open space. So that's why we kept them there. Again, the parking could still be over here and kept there, but we didn't want the parking in the area where we moved all the nice, those are the nice woods right here.
So you're saying the current plan was least impactful for trees?
That's what we felt from the beginning. I took the site, along with Mr. Barton. We walked the site, took the several months to develop this. Where can we put things where we don't have to cut down as many trees? We don't have to grade where we have the minimum footprint for the site. If we move things around, our footprint will grow. Not saying that that's not something that's up to you guys to decide. I'm just giving you how I went through the thought process to get where we are today. And that's, I think, what you were asking.
Peter, where the, the discussion really is where the electric parking is, right?
That's right down here.
I don't know why it's discussion. It's, it's proposed right over in that area.
It's right by here and it's all being blocked by a row of trees as a visual.
Is that area open now or are the trees?
Well, that's kinda again what I'm saying. It's underbrush. So the one house, I can see the one house clearly.
It wasn't much of a woods. It was a wood, a wood, a couple scrub trees. Like on the other side.
There's an old footing from one of the old barns over there. It goes, actually, it's on my property, goes almost all the way to the property line.
Yeah, it does.
An old concrete footing.
But we certainly could add to the plan the large trees, significant trees over 12 inches to show you where they are.
I have a question for the town, for the attorney.
You don't have to do that. All that has to be done is members of the board. When they go out here, go up to Beacon Polkway Road, drive less than 1,000 feet and look to the left.
We'd be more than happy with, I'm sure that we could set up a, a, a site meeting where we could walk it through, show your work, and then I could show you exactly where the edges of the parking lot go. And either in form of a walk, in that case, we're more than happy to do that.
I know the property. I drive by it. I don't have a problem. I know, I know what, I know what the parcel is, okay? My big, my big concern initially, Peter, coming in here was when you initially came in here and it was to talk about making a cafe and alcohol and stuff, okay? We're dealing with cider and blackberry wine and cherry wine. That's fine. It's all agricultural products.
Have a good night, Pete.
Put a couple of cows on and goats and sell cheese.
Hold on, your glasses right there.
I mean, to me right now, we're in a spitting contest.
Yeah.
And I have a tendency to it. So agree with Mr. Barton that I would get personally, I would get very pissed off. And I would say, to hell with all of you. You want the parking lot over there? Mr. Randport, come on in, clear cut it. And we'll go from there.
So now, considering that that is behind the building. And not necessarily in the Boucher. Of the road.
Parking is, is a problem.
I understand you were trying to do your diligence in regards to disturbance and trees. What are the value of that wooded area? The value of the wooded.
Well, I would say, I would agree. T A is a step. I just was telling Rob, I got a big wood chipper, we got chainsaws. I'll clear it right out. Let me park it over there. Go over and see the property before you even.
I can't believe we're taking so much time talking about plant cuttings. Massive little wood lot.
So let's leave that there.
Because I have one neighbor that we gotta move the cars away.
I'm sorry if this is taking too much time for you. We're, we're responsible for protesting. The community looks to us when they come on a public meeting. And we, we have to have answers for that thing. Call them now. We've been blamed several times in the past. How are you, how dare you let this happen? How did you let this happen? We're trying to find a way amicably where we work together towards a site plan that's gonna work for everybody. But we need the ability to have answers for the community, and that's all we're trying to get at. So trying to figure out.
The community, you're not gonna, you're not gonna make everyone in the community happy. We have to understand that too.
As you saw from my response in the, in agreeing with Soler.
So we're gonna have those few voices.
I think I've demonstrated that.
Yeah.
We can be equitable to both, you know, so.
Right, let's let them get through their questions. You have an obligation to ask the questions. And then we can provide the answers because they've already decided this is the best layout and.
Yeah, we're, we're still fact finding, I mean, but now, now we're gonna go look at the property. But you initially wanted us to consider site plan approval and a public hearing, right?
Well, I would still like you to set the hearing.
Yeah, well, but the point is that, you know, the first recommendation, all right? And we've been on it now. These, Pete left and we're getting nowhere.
That's right, that's the goal.
So it, it is something that you're willing to consider. We just have to look at the property, is that all? So moving the parking lot.
So I was in front of this board last summer.
Right now, the proposal is to keep the parking where it is. If after the public hearing and after the site walk, this, you decide that it just cannot stay there and you need to mitigate some impact that's going to be very large, we can talk about it. But right now, we'd like you to evaluate the proposal that is before you, which is to keep the parking where it is.
So which is it? Is it evaluating the proof's plan or get to the property first to get a view of it? Cause you just need to.
No, it's hope. We would like you to evaluate this plan, make the parking where it is.
But you're not gonna get through evaluation of plan until people go and look at it, right?
Well, I think you want to get through the questions. I think what we said is, we're not gonna come forward with an alternative at this point.
So I think some of the other questions and problems that we have, all right, is there's, there's, is there a lighting?
There is lighting shown on the plan, but you will provide a photo of the lumin.
We can do a photometric.
Photometric. That's fine.
And landscaping, there's another item that.
Well, we have landscaping on there.
You have some, right?
There's two kinds of spruces shown.
We've got all the trees on there.
If there's something else that you're looking for, let us know. We can edit.
I have a question for the attorney. I see that this is, you guys reviewed a few studies. And you're concurring that for agricultural use. As an agricultural use protected by agricultural market, why are we even reviewing this? Aren't they allowed to do?
No, not necessarily. You know, that's not the case.
So like the, the buffer is, is, is required from property to property, from commercial to property, as I understand. If we're talking about his, his field where he grows crops and a neighbor has a problem with looking at corn, right? That is, that's, that would be an unreasonable restriction to place on him, right? But it, putting a parking lot in somebody's backyard from building construction.
Yeah, I don't think Ag market would support that.
All right, so just.
Ag markets, Ag markets doesn't not support a parking lot. You're allowed to build, it's a commercial use and therefore it's subject to the town's site plan approval.
All right, so that's what we've agreed here that.
Yes, we, we're here for site plan.
They said, it's an agricultural use, but it's. But it's still subject to our view and, and you guys concur that you, you need the site plan approval from us.
I mean, we've submitted for the site plan approval. We are here to go through the process.
All right, that's all. I, I just wanted to get that straightened out because it was a little confusing.
And then the other issue is the entrance. So you, you've got the lighting that you're gonna, that you're gonna take care of. We're gonna take a look at the property. I guess you're gonna organize a, a site visit for us.
Do you normally do that tonight or do you send it around?
I'm not gonna do it tonight.
So you scheduled.
Not, not, not gonna do it. I'm sorry.
You scheduled it tonight, so.
You scheduled it. Yeah, you sent an email out. And we'll try to get as many on board as we can.
Well, it's subject to open meetings law.
Well, if it's just, if it's just a fact finding, if it's just fact finding.
We can even go on our own.
Well, so there's, you guys can go on your own. It'd probably be easier for the applicant so he doesn't have to go there six different times. You can have all six members at the site at once. It's just for purposes of fact finding, for information gathering. You guys can meet and it's not subject to the open meetings law.
Well, no discussion having, no discussion.
You can't discuss. You guys are there just to take notes, ask questions about the facts.
You can't talk to each other.
Don't talk to each other. Don't discuss anything. You certainly can't take any action. But you can certainly have a fact finding.
You can ask questions of Peter and of Joe.
All right, but we're gonna get more survey information at some point?
So, I mean, it's sort of a chicken in the egg. He was hesitant to go further with the lumens plan and identifying the trees unless we had like a, a location that we kind of all agreed on, right? Because every time you move something, you have to redo the plans. So he, Joe would respond to all of the questions very for your engineer. And we can get new plans submitted, very quick turnaround, so that there's here in time for the meeting on December 15th. I do reiterate again, we still would like you to set that public hearing with the understanding we might not be ready to close it, but let's start hearing from the public. Let's start getting those concerns out there so that we can start addressing.
But there's a time clock that starts ticking. And we've already, we've already run into resistance when it comes to answering questions. So my, my point here is that, I'm sorry, all right? You can, did you wanna say something about that?
I, I'm here.
Oh, she's, yeah.
Okay, but, yeah.
John, I have no food to go on.
Okay.
Can I just say one thing? You were the board that was here when I was going for a special use permit. You went to public hearing. Dan turns around and says, oh my gosh, the building inspector hasn't weighed in on this, this project yet. So you had to rescind that vote. Now that was back two summers ago. I'm standing in front of you as a farmer now. But remember agriculture, which I have, I have the rights and I'm just asking to move this project forward.
I just want to point out that there was already a public hearing set on this exact same proposal, just with different wording. So at that point, we thought it was ready for a public hearing in July 2021. So we're just asking that we reschedule that public hearing that we didn't get to go to because of this use issue came up. So what we're.
There's no, right, the use issue, we're passed.
Yeah, we're past that. I was saying in July, that's why we wouldn't get to our hearing in August. So you already found at one point that this application was ready for the public hearing. We're just asking you to reschedule it so we can start that process again. Like, we're going to keep providing the information that you've asked for. We're gonna turn it around, but we think it's important to start hearing from the public and get that process going. Because we can spend three meetings talking about layout and then someone from the public can show up, bring up an issue we never thought about and now, you know, now, now we're at month four talking about something entirely new.
Well, what, what I'm looking to do is, is be prepared before we schedule it. So that we have one public hearing and then we move on from there, all right? I'm not looking to adjourn if that is, is at all possible. So I don't feel prepared at all right now. Cause we're not, we're not, we haven't figured out the location of, of the septic or the parking lot, all right? The, the entrance issue, I still don't get it. I understand that you're suspending operations at Treetop.
It's an existing car cut.
Yeah, but you're not gonna be using Treetop's entrance, all right? When you, when you restart that business or?
I never use Treetop's entrance. I use the farm entrance.
And so you're not, right.
I was told by the planning board that I can't take people from one property over a border to Treetop. None of this makes sense what comes off of this table.
So what am I missing?
John, I'm sorry.
What am I missing?
You weren't part of that planning board.
Where is the entrance to Treetop?
It's not.
Where is it supposed to be or where is it?
Yeah, where was it supposed to be? What was approved?
Further along, way up the road.
Near Fortington.
Yeah, it's way up the road. And then, and then the fact that.
Yeah, same.
And I don't think it's relevant either.
Because the same entrance was used for Treetop.
But for this farm stand right now, it's an existing car cut, which already provides access to and from the farm. There's already events at the farm, so the same people that are going to the farm stand now can go to this farm stand. I don't, I don't see it as introducing any new traffic to the site.
Well, I, I think maybe.
Cause that's the whole point.
I think put an analysis, at least put an analysis, put, have an engineer look at it and say, okay, we've got these other uses.
John, we did a $27,000 traffic study for Treetop. Nothing is gonna change, not at all.
That was a different entrance, wasn't it?
It didn't, no, it was in Rose. It was County 7, same thing.
So I think you just refer, I think you just refer, just did a supplement.
Or a farm market on the side. That, that is fine. With the understanding that, again, the farm market that was on site is no longer there.
Well, and that would be part of your analysis.
We could provide a traffic analysis for the decent.
Yeah, I, I was on the board at the time when, when he came before us with Treetop. And at the time, he made an explanation of how, how the circulation works. And he had some rough stuff in the beginning, but then you made some changes where you were parking people more anterior to the, to the core. I remember, I remember that. And so he worked out the transportation issues at the time. We were okay with it. So I think right now we're just considering.
We'll give you the.
I can demonstrate with the numbers that if you have 40 cars parked in there, the traffic is gonna be minimal.
Just update it based upon the existing traffic because you're using the same entrance for all the uses.
Whether we came off of the entrance to the parking farms, it came off of the existing drive now, which we could have done. But we went to the internal because the planning board had that not asked. Still gonna be entry onto county roads, could be minor.
So I, I can just.
We'll demonstrate that.
Put an update together and analysis so we have it in the record?
I have a question to the manager. What's our standard process for moving here on these site plans? Right now, we're at the discussion stage. It's a sketch plan stage?
Yeah, it's a sketch plan stage, please. And then we'll maybe we'll talk about seeker, which we've already suggested is type 2.
Okay.
So at some point, the board would either agree with me or, or go out on their own on that, but if they did.
Don't we normally approve the sketch plan before we move to the public hearing?
You normally would, yeah.
So what John is saying is he's not quite comfortable with, with the plan yet. You're asking us for, uh, to call for the public hearing. I'm hearing what you're saying.
Right, because we had it all ready.
But John is, I want you to hear what he's saying, which is he's uncomfortable with the la, with the plan because there's a lot of questions. Probably because there's not too much information on these drawings. Now, it would probably help a lot to go out to the site and see. And then, and then, or, or give us more survey information to review on a plan. So that, I, I wanna believe you that this is the best location for the parking lot. I do believe you. But there's nothing substantiating that in the drawing. I guess if we go out and look at it, it'll probably become obvious to us.
We could locate every tree. If that's something you do to most applicants, just so you know, that's about 5,000 mil cows. You're asking the client to pay for it. Versus looking at it, we do show the edge of the woods on there, which is typically what most people allow versus spending money to show all those trees on there, all the trees. But if we're gonna cut down anyway, it'd be easier just to show where we're cutting down.
We shouldn't even have that. We shouldn't even have that in the order. It's according to what you're saying, sounds stupid.
I know, but I see, I hear, I've been here a lot and you weave it a lot, quite honestly.
We weave it a lot. We just weave it on a lot line, real life.
I know, but you also weave it.
Please don't compare this to a lot.
No, no, I've been here many years too. And you have to weigh if you want us to do it.
Well, I'm just, I wanna be able to.
Well, I just. Well, I just don't.
I want to have a more informed decision. We could disagree or disagree.
No, I mean, if you want us to do it.
I'm the guy, the board has got to make that decision. I got to sign, we have to sign that secret. And we're held accountable by the public. And so it's a little bit more weight on my shoulders to, to, that I, I just all, I don't think I'm asking too much to have more information on the floor.
That's fine. I think a sidewalk is very appropriate. We will send around some dates. I think Saturday mornings, would they be okay for you? Is everyone available on the weekends?
We cannot go together.
You guys can come anywhere you can.
Yeah, we, we just talk.
I say we do what Pete, we just, we just make our own, if Pete's okay with that.
Look, you come here and look at the house, see what condition it's in, please. Do whatever you want in the property. You know what? I got to move this process either forward because I have a business now that's.
You've been through a lot.
Right?
And you want to get it rolling.
And by the way, I was, I put these plans in October 3rd. It was supposed to be here last month, which would have cultivated a lot for tonight. And guess what? I wasn't put on the agenda. Do you know why, Rob?
I don't know why.
Because I was told that it was a new application. So because since I didn't have an application, that second fee put in.
No, that's actually.
Who? Somebody, what is that? I'm saying something wrong here, John, or what?
Yes, you were applying.
What is it?
All right, so number one?
Please.
We offered to have a consultant meeting with you at least, it was like a week after the regularly scheduled meeting in October. So we did. Dan and I offered to meet with you, your attorney and your engineer to give you the feedback. You said no, correct?
Actually, I didn't say no.
It's a yes or no question.
How about the meetings that I asked for last year? And then even the, you know, just kind of the farmland integration asked for meetings for this project.
I'm trying to move this vote.
So I'm actually, you know what? You want to know why? And I want to say this to the camera. Because if I had a meeting with you at Town Hall, I had no idea what it was really going to percolate, right? But what do I pay for you? I pay for you. I pay for everybody. So I thought, you know what? Let me go in front of the planning board. Because the planning board took this project to a public hearing a year and a half ago. Found no problem with it, but had to rescind it because the, I mean, the building inspector didn't agree with it. So anyway.
So we've already, I think.
I don't, I don't.
So you know what I'm saying? This is so much money just being burned, right? And I'm not going to burn it. I'm sorry.
I was looking forward to meeting that day so we could have hashed this out in front of each other and understand the plans that I'm seeing.
So let's.
No, you saw these plans before, John.
I have, you know what? I do. I have them in my, I've been carrying my.
You saw these plans a year ago.
Kitchen counter.
Yes.
And I'm seeing them now in front of you for the first time.
Well, he just.
No, these are the same plans that I stood in front of back in the summer of 2021.
They're the same plans from July that was at the hearing.
The driveway is not there.
Yes, it is. John, I'm sorry. You're so mistaken here. It's the same stuff. So you didn't, it's the same stuff, John. The same plans. You wanted to have a public hearing.
It's a different application.
Well, it's the same application.
This is semantics. This is not farm stand. This is foreign market.
Let's just, let's just.
I would, I would ask that we do.
Tens of thousands of dollars later from a farm stand to the foreign market, John. How's that?
That has nothing to do with me.
It has everything to do with this town. I am burning up so much money to do what? To try to farm and try to exist.
I'm going to have to insist that we.
I'm sorry. Yeah, it's funny.
I understand you're not going to set the public hearing tonight.
No.
You're not ready. We will send around dates for a sidewalk unless you just want to do them individually. But I would ask that you. That you, that you classify the action as type 2.
Action tonight?
I think it's, that's statutory.
Sidewalk is a group. Okay, I take that back. You know what? I feel a little, a little aggression here. So it's got to be a schedule. I don't want, you want my property unless it's a scheduled visit. So I'll come together if you want.
Well, often, no notification.
No, we don't like, as long as. No, it's, it's, if you're just there for.
Oh, okay. Not speak about anything.
She was, she's.
Yeah, she was in the back.
Oh.
Not have a dialogue.
Okay.
Board members.
You can ask the.
I'll just say a few questions from. I have no support. It's the aggression.
This has been a very long process for me.
It's coming from.
It's just been a long process. So we're trying to.
So you let us know what you want us to do.
So I'd like you to vote that classified as a type 2 action tonight. It's simple. It's part of the statute. It's no, not regressing on me, but at least it's one step forward.
All right, we're going to have a discussion. If you'd just keep quiet for a second.
Dan?
I didn't even get, I didn't even get to read the secret.
Oh, Dan, is your recommendation that this?
Yeah, we, we reviewed part 617.4, which is, lists the type 1 actions. And the fact that this is also an agricultural district makes it 25% of that.
Because you were looking at it. Oh, okay. John, what is going on with you, John?
Nothing. She was staring at me. I thought she was going to say something.
Oh my God. This is like, this is getting like a Twilight Zone in this town. John, what is going on?
Okay, so.
Oh, seriously. This is like bizarre.
We really.
It is. John, it's totally bizarre.
I'm sorry. I, I am finding it bizarre.
I'm listening to.
You're acting bizarre.
Really?
You are.
Okay, enough, please.
I'm waiting, I'm waiting for my response here.
I, we specifically said we have to speak one at a time because there's a camera and one microphone on here.
No, you're absolutely right.
So I, we can't have the back and forth there. There it goes. 617.4 lists type 1 actions. The fact that it's in an agricultural district makes it 25% of the threshold. So if one of the type 1 actions would be, say, clearing of 10 acres, disturbance of land in 10 acres, or 500 parking spaces, so that gets reduced to 2 and 1/2 acres or 125 parking spaces. They're still falling below that threshold with the plan that they had out before us. In addition, when you look at 617.5, which lists type 2 actions for non-residential uses with a 4,000 square foot rose floor area or less, it, that is, is actually listed as a type 2 action. So we opine that it's a type 2 action. And I believe I forward that over to the attorney. He can tell me how he feels about it and then.
No, I agree. It's, it's, it's under 4,000 square feet. It's specifically right there on the secret regulation is the type 2 action. So all that's saying is type 2 action is saying that this, the state, the state regulations, the D.C. regulations has found that anything, any non, any non-residential use, less than 4,000, is exempt from secret. So it doesn't mean, so that means you don't have to go through the environmental review process under secret. That means that it's not going to be subject to environmental impact statement, which this is not. Even if it was unlisted, I don't think this would in no way trigger any EIS. So all that is saying, when you classify this as a type 2 action, it just means you don't have to worry about secrets. Now, that being said, you're still looking at pretty much the same issues. Traffic, lighting, noise, screening, landscaping, you know, those type of site plan issues. You know, pretty much overlap with secret issues. It's just procedurally, it's one less thing you have to worry about. But substantively, you're still kind of looking at the same issues.
Thank you. I'm prepared to vote.
And, and can I just offer one other thing? Back in 2021, they appeared with the farm stand here in April and June and no public hearing was ever set. Just going to say that for the record.
Okay.
In fact, it was voted to, but rescinded.
It was, it was.
So for the record, the board here did vote to go to public hearing. Then Dan, you turned around and said that the, the building inspector has not weighed in on the project yet, which surprised me because we had been here for two months. So that was kind of like not a good thing for the town to do. So you put down on the table, so it was rescinded. So yes, this project did go to public hearing for a couple moments, a couple minutes anyway.
So I'm prepared to vote on the secret action if we start.
Do you have a call?
Yes, you do.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Well, I make a motion to.
Team the actions.
Team the action type 2.
I'll second the second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Next question. What is the submission deadline for the December 15th meeting?
17 days prior, which is the 28th of November. It's a short turnaround because it's the third Thursday is the fastest it could be.
So I'd like to try and schedule the sidewalk for before the submission deadline so that issues that come up can be incorporated into the plan. So it looks like we'll send around some dates soon, but would you be available Saturday morning?
I am absolutely.
So, I mean, we.
Is coming Saturday?
Yep.
I'll be in.
Yeah, I'll be in Boston.
Okay. What about the sidewalk the Saturday after would be too late?
I can do any day of the week.
Okay. Any day of the week. You want to propose something right now so we can?
I think it's up to them. I mean, I'll, I'll go out of the way then.
I guess our.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
If, if it's possible and people are available, if you're there, some folks are available and some aren't. Need to raise.
We can do two days.
I'm just saying, just, just, we're scheduled walk, right? Like say, we're available, but they're not.
We can do two days.
I, I think that would be helpful.
Next two Saturdays? One this Saturday and one next Saturday or that's Thanksgiving?
How about we do one this Saturday and one like on Tuesday?
I, I work during the.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, I work.
I'm off on Friday at night. The Friday after Thanksgiving.
Friday.
I have to be.
My Friday? I'll be in line.
Okay, we'll send us in.
Well, if, if we have to, we can make an appointment with Pete.
Yes.
I mean, I could see the property from the.
There, we can have no problem.
Right? I mean, I know what it is.
That's the thing, I think, once you see.
The biggest with the sidewalk I see is I need to get direction from the board, whether you want those trees on the next plan or not. So I'm not coming back on the 15th with the question, there's not enough data on the plan we got. It's going to take me time to locate those trees and put them on.
Correct.
So I'm not saying, that's up to you to decide. So I'm just telling you, time can bring. And if there's going to be individual people going out there, somebody has to collectively get your votes and express them to Victoria so she can tell me, yes, do the trees or don't do the trees before the submissions.
Well, they can't really talk about it.
I know, but somehow we need to have a consensus of whether we do the trees. Whether you tell me tonight or, I don't want to be gone the 15th where you say do the trees. I don't really care. It's up to you.
I feel it's important. For me to understand the implications based of the plan, it's important to show the trees on. That's why it's in the code.
I have a really good idea, all right? We'll see if everybody agrees. Why don't you be our proxy? You, you report back to us.
Oh, you mean go to the field? No, he's asking if we, if he can, if he should show the trees on the plan.
So.
And I'm saying, my thing is, I would prefer that he does.
I don't want to speak for, you know, everybody, but I'm, I'm comfortable. I'm, I'm comfortable with your recommendation and information, since this is your profession.
Well, all right, so there are two times when we put trees in the plans, right? One with the sketch and one at the, at the preliminary front? And they have to ask for waiver for each one? Is that correct?
Um, I believe that's in the subdivision code that way. This is in subdivision.
That's all you want, G.
Yes.
By the way, we don't have to figure out who's going to be there when and.
I mean, we waive showing trees when, the rationale for when we waive showing trees is when there's no disturbance plant in those areas.
And that's hopefully what the case will be.
Unless here, there's disturbance here.
So, I mean, if you're saying to only show the trees in the areas where the parking is proposed.
You are, I mean, that's why we don't.
That's a simpler.
No, no, I don't think you're understanding. Let me explain to Pete more later. The, the, the trees help guide our decision. So.
And that's what we're hoping to say.
I know you're wanting us to contemplate this and this may be fine today. And you have a rationale of why it goes there because there's trees here. I need to see the trees here in order to concur with your decision there.
I, oh, I 100% understand what you're asking and that's why we're, we're suggesting the sidewalk first to see if actually seeing the trees.
That's fine. I'll, I'll, just to try to ease this process, I'll, I'll go out and look at the sidewalk.
Isn't there a bank behind that house?
Sure.
So you got to be disturbing the bank commands, right?
You disturb so many trees. Once you come out there, I, I welcome you to come out there.
All right, I mean.
You'll understand right away.
I hope I'm not, I hope they're, I hope you're not feeling any aggression. It'd be much easier if I could just go when I, when I get a chance.
That's why I welcome you because you will see right away, once you're on that property, you're going to see the disturbance that we will create if we take this parking and switch it to the other side, which I will do and I got a big chipper. I can do it. But you, you see how many trees get cut down.
And then you'll see the people complain.
Yes.
Would it be, would it be appropriate if I emailed everyone your cell phone number so they could call you when they want to visit the property?
Can't you Google that and look at it?
Oh my gosh, that's a.
Google it shows it's a very good idea.
Yes.
You would be able to see it right away if you just like.
Well, you see tree cover, but you know.
You wouldn't see the type.
I understand. The person's better to see when you go out there, you're going to have more.
You drive by it.
I, I've offered some flexibility here. Are you in concurrence with it? Can I come out to the site when I get a chance? And I will reserve my decision on waving until I go out to see the site.
Procedurally, I'm just confused because as you can't make decisions to discuss, Mark, go out there.
They're, they're delegating, it sounds to me, subject to their attorney. They're delegating that decision to.
And what person will lead that decision? How will that be?
Well, I think I'm very confused.
Who will we report back to? I just want to.
Uh, how about we report to Dan and John first?
Okay. Dan will probably be next.
And Dan and John will.
Okay. I'm not, I'm not trying to be difficult. I just want to know what my marching orders are.
Right, so, so let's just recap and figure out the action items and wrap this up.
Yeah. Please.
Beat the dead horse to speak. Okay, so we're, so I guess is only one member going to do the site visit or do other members want to do the site visit?
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to drive by.
I think the decision on the tree location is a delegate.
Right. They're delegating the decision to the experience planning board member with that respect. So that's, that's one thing.
Are you guys okay with that?
I'm comfortable.
I'm comfortable with that.
Absolutely.
All right, I'm, because you're going to go see it anyway, so we should have a discussion of that.
I'm just saying, you can.
No, you can't. Only here.
That's why, that's why I was trying to say you can.
We, we. We're, we're going to make revised plans for the next meeting. If, if there's a huge disagreement, I think it's simple.
I think this is simple. Just let us go look at the site and then let us come back to the next meeting and talk.
Yep, sounds good.
Can we go look?
So I, Peter has asked that you be there. So I listed his cell phone number.
Of course.
Okay, why?
Oh wait, are you allowing him on?
You said no.
Okay.
You said you wanted the whole group.
So.
That'll, that'll.
I'm hearing, I'm hearing, it's wrong. Look, I'll do separate business, all right? Just drive by. I think, I think Faye put it perfectly. The thing you have to do is drive by and go see it.
All right.
All right, so.
See, you see, absolutely. Totally.
The action items or the.
This hour conversation is just going to be such a moot point that many, somebody sees it.
We'll, we'll provide the.
Do some type of supplement to the traffic?
Uh huh.
Little matrix.
The lighting?
Yeah, we just had the photo metrics.
Okay, I think you've got the landscaping, I guess.
Landscapes in there. We just have to, you know.
Can you identify the plan that you're putting in the email?
I think around the lighting, but we can give you. I think we're allowed, but we can give you a page.
Spur that up a little bit.
We can make a table on it.
Put the plant in the retaining section.
Yeah, we can, yeah, typically, yeah, we can give you.
And I, and you know, just look at Dan's memo, I mean, I.
Yeah, I mean, stormwater is a big deal too because that's a, you know, an impact and neighbors have to deal with that, so.
I prefer not to do a stormwater, which is a major expense. Until we find out the layout, because you're doubling the cost and then you go, stormwater, that's very expensive.
That's fair. That's fair.
I mean, to do, no, to do two of them is.
You want to stay in the money?
I'm just, we're going, whatever it is, it is. We're still going to do stormwater, it's going to still be done to stand by. We're planning a fire retention, so the difference between over one acre or one is just filing the form.
Oh, sorry, you just said you didn't want any storm.
No.
No, I didn't want to do the stormwater.
I found out what layout you designed as a layout.
If I did this entire stormwater, we're talking $12,000, we're going to throw it away, we do another.
But, so there might be some other lower hanging fruit items on Dan's memo that might be.
I agree, I agree.
To address.
The one I didn't want.
Plants.
Same as we're not.
More information?
Same as we're not going to finalize the, the septic unit as well, you understand? Until I know what layout you like, because doubling that is expensive, I think you should, you understand, should be done this early. If you still are choosing which layout were you.
So we'll provide, we'll provide a comment letter in response that says, either the information's being provided now or it will be provided after certain things are determined. So we will just address each item and go from there.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Bye.
Sorry, I was just.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. So for extensions, I have the worst site plan.
Yes, you know, I did send a draft resolution on this as well.
Yeah.
But I don't know. Well, if you had a chance to review it, that would be great. If not. Yeah, so let me at least give you, pull up the dates from the email that I sent.
Okay.
Okay, it's just taking a long time.
All right, so we're reviewing the worst response, so we want to, did you want to move on with that? They're requesting two ninety day extension.
Yeah, I just can't pull up the email at the moment for some reason, it's not.
Yeah, I'm not getting any service either. That's why I can't pull it up. Just have to see your, what I sent.
Just wanted to be able to tell the dates.
I don't know if I can hear that very well.
Yeah, I hear that, it's too terrible. So is there any major objections here? Can we just?
I have it here, Dan.
Okay, is there any possibility it's 10 o'clock? So the two ninety up here comes.
We don't, we don't need you to stick around.
Well, we've already lost, you know, people walk out here.
We've lost three of them.
If I walk out, then we're in trouble.
Yeah.
Right, all right, so the, let's see.
Want me to read it?
There was a previous extension through November 15th, 2022. So they've asked for two ninety day extensions, which would bring them through May 14th, 2023. And they are still working on their financing. It's a large project and we're trying to figure that all out, so seems very reasonable to me.
I agree. So what, would you like two ninety days?
That's what they've asked for, that's what I was suggesting, and that's what I put in the draft resolution.
Motion to approve two ninety days?
I will make a motion to approve two ninety day extensions.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
So that's one great Palo East subdivision.
Hello.
I've got that here. Now, what does this guy?
Oh, you got it.
You are, you have got the entertainment.
Give him what he wants. And that's great. We're on Georgia.
Okay, so if you don't mind, I'll just say, the, the dates were, they're asking for, he suggested actually three ninety days. I think he might have asked for two. We're suggesting three, which will bring you through April 15th, 2023. That's mainly health department and D E P review of water supply and sewage disposal. They were kind of holding the process up, so. Have there been any substantive changes to the plan as a result of their review? Or is it just?
Absolutely, a couple of minor notes for the health department and some additional testing that we're trying to fight back around.
How many months is it?
Three?
Three. Oh, the three houses up on the hill, that big giant parcel there, there's three of them. Yeah. Yeah. I'm sure you have, you have that health department, you're with that health department.
Yeah, there was a sticking point, there, there was a test well done there a long time ago. And what typically happens when you pump a test well, you use a lot of black electrical tape. And black electrical tape has antimony on it. Antimony immediately gets into water supply temporarily, but it shows up on the test.
Oh.
Creates a vibration and then, well, hell breaks loose. And so what you end up doing is going back in there, pumping it out again until it's thoroughly clean and retesting it. It was pumped out, retested, came back negative. And then out of the blue, the health department decided, no, we want you to test it again. So now I have to try to mobilize a pump test company and go through that circus again. So we're trying to fight that and see if we can get us a conditional approval.
All right. I'm okay with the grant thing you changed.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 So for the record, that was three ninety day extensions that'll bring them through April 15th, 2023.
And Camp Luddington.
Okay.
Thank you. Sorry, keep your.
All that's for that. Should have bumped that one up here closer to Tom. Yeah, those were the extensions above discussions.
I was looking to see if you pulled the hearings in there, but I hit a cell service and I was like, oh my God.
We did. You had the right, right side seat.
So Camp Luddington did submit on time and it wasn't placed on the agenda quickly. And as a result, I didn't write up a resolution until just today because that's when we recognized that it was supposed to be on. But it's, it's, again, this is a simple one. They actually appeared before the town board just the other night and they were able to get their waiver of the recreation dues. That was one of the conditions. So they're, they're actively working on getting everything satisfied, it's just a matter of time, so. Their approval is actually good through December 13th, but they've asked for it earlier. So I, I have no issues with considering two ninety day extensions that'll bring them through June 11th, 2023.
Let's make a motion to give them two ninety day extensions.
There you go.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
You're good.
Motion closed meeting?
About minutes.
There we go.
There were none.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
They're coming from the video.
Okay.
Set off.
Go ahead.